Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Steve Kern is the pastor at Olivet Baptist Church. He will lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Mars if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I'd like to say, I think it's a wonderful privilege to be able to begin this council meeting with prayer. Let us pray. Father, we thank you so much for the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you, Lord, for these that have chosen to run for office and have given us good leadership here in Oklahoma City. We thank you, Lord, for all the positive things that are happening here in our city. We pray that you'll give them leadership and direction as they continue to make plans and make decisions that affect us all. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and discernment. We do pray, Lord, for those that are less privileged. We pray, Lord, that we would be able to find ways to help them as well. Be with our troops in harm's way, protect them, bring them home safely. We just ask for your leadership and direction here today, and thank you for it in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for As everyone knows, it is National Public Works Week. And if you didn't know that, you do now. Eric here, Eric Winger, I know part of his staff is Eric. Eric's in the back. Well, tell Eric to get in here and be part of his staff as you all come forward. Eric, come on in. We have a proclamation. I'd like you all to come forward and stand aside me as we ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, bridges, traffic, drainage, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public work officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public work departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Mayor Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through 26 as National Public Works Week in Oklahoma City, and he calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Let's show our appreciation to our fine staff in the Public Works Department. You know, we have so much construction going on throughout the city, and when they came in my office this morning, I said, "I can't imagine you all don't have anything better to do than this." Because we have orange cones all over downtown, and of course, construction projects taking place throughout our eight wards throughout the city. And so, I know the citizens of Oklahoma City are excited about every completion of the work that you all do on a daily basis, and thank you. And I'm sorry it takes National Public Works Weeks for us to officially thank you guys for all the work you do, but we really appreciate your work. Let's show our appreciation again. We also have a number of outstanding young athletes in our city, and we have two basketball teams that we're hoping to honor this morning. I think only one of them is here right now, so let me call the boys from Centennial High School, the 3A state champions forward. Coach Raper, bring your young men forward. And we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Centennial High School graduated three senior starters from last season and relied on a talented mix of underclassmen, and whereas Centennial finished the 2011-12 season with a record of 22 to 8. Whereas the student athletes at Centennial demonstrate their winning attitude on and off the court, serving as ambassadors for their school and the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas Centennial survived a series of close games en route to the championship game. Centennial defeated Victory Christian 49 to 38 to win the 3A Boys Basketball State Championship. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and congratulate Centennial High School on winning the 2011 Class 3A Boys Basketball State Championship.
Now, boys, comes the opportunity for us to vote on this resolution to see if we really want to honor you guys. Let's take, we have a motion in a second. I'll cast your votes. You want green lights up there on that board. There you go. It's unanimous. Let's show our appreciation of the young men from Centennial. And Coach Scott Raper.
Well, first of all, we'd like to thank the city council for recognizing our kids. We appreciate all the hard work you've done. I was told last night by my son, "Dad, I don't care," and "Thank you for doing this, but you could play the Thunder, but you won't win." And so, we just want to thank you for recognizing these kids. They put in a lot of hard work, and we thank you for your hard work that you're doing for the city. Thank you.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. Congratulations, guys. Yeah, we got to get them back to school, so, yeah, you don't get to sit around here anymore. We also are hoping to honor the young men from Northeast Academy, but I don't believe they are here yet, so if they come in, we'll deal with that when it happens. As many of you know, we recently lost someone who's very important to us, City Hall, Judge Manger from our courts department. And his daughter Emily and her husband Ken are here. Would you all come forward? We have a resolution honoring Judge Manger for his years of service to the city of Oklahoma City. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Judge William J. Manger was born on December 23, 1945, in Patterson, New Jersey, and passed away at his home in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, on April 30, 2012. Whereas Judge Manger moved to Oklahoma to attend college at Oklahoma City University, where he played baseball for his beloved coach, Paul Hanson. Whereas Judge Manger graduated from Oklahoma City University with a Bachelor of Science degree in 1967, a Master's of Business Administration degree in 1969, and a Juris Doctor degree from the Oklahoma City University School of Law in 1976. Judge Manger was the Affirmative Action Manager for 29 years at Lucent Technology, during which time he also practiced law at Foshee &amp; Yoffe, served on the Board of Crime Stoppers and the Board of Directors at Weoke Credit Union. Whereas Judge Manger was sworn in as a full-time municipal judge for the city in 1998 and was appointed as presiding judge in 2003. Whereas Judge Manger was beloved, respected, and appreciated by his fellow judges, the city prosecutors, the criminal defense bar, and municipal court staff and city police officers. Whereas Judge Manger found joy in life, had an excellent sense of humor, and held a passion for fair play that all contributed to his judicial character of dispensing justice, tempered with mercy, and always seeking to do the right thing. Whereas Judge Manger is survived by his loving companion Barbara Simon, daughter Emily Whitaker, son-in-law Ken Whitaker, grandchildren Dalton and Reed, son Jay Manger, and daughter Allison. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Judge William J. Manger.
We will need a motion in a second. All right, cast your votes. And the resolution passes unanimously. The presiding judge is a very difficult position. We came not only to know and respect him, but to love him very much. So thank you all for allowing us to read this resolution this morning and show our respects. You bet, Emily. Thank you. Thanks, Ken. Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor. The passing of Judge Manger is a major event in this city. He leaves a legacy at the municipal courts that's unrivaled. No one ever, in my recollection, did a better job of managing our municipal court system than Bill Manger did. He was a good friend, and he was a good lawyer, but he was an excellent judge. He was, I can't say enough about what he brought to the city. He did a great job. He took really good care of the people that worked for him and the people that appeared in front of him, both lawyers and defendants or petitioners or whatever they were, at whatever reason they were there. He just, he will be impossible to replace. We can only hope to find somebody to fill that slot, but he won't replace what he brought to Oklahoma City. He probably elevated our municipal court system to the highest level it's ever been in its history. He did a great job, and he was a great man. You should be proud of your dad.
If I could just add on to that, I'd like to say that I had an opportunity to visit with him just a couple of weeks ago at council. And over the course of a couple of years, I spent a lot of time with some of the public defenders, and they shared with me on so many occasions the high esteem in which they held your dad and the level of professionalism that he brought to the municipal court. And I was really pleased that I had had an opportunity to share that with him just a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to add my condolences.
We also have an event coming up in May, the Paseo Arts Festival. Would you all like to come up forward? Jo's bringing some of her artwork up. This is Memorial Day weekend in the Paseo District.
Yes.
And I know you'd like to talk to the council and tell them all about it, so go ahead.
Well, actually, I'm going to let Colin talk to you about the festival, but I want to talk about the poster. Every year, we have an artist in Paseo that honors us with giving us a piece of their artwork for our poster and also for our T-shirts. And this year, we have Michi Susan. Michi is a highly acclaimed artist, not only here in Oklahoma City, but nationally. Last year, she won the Governor's Artist Award, and we are so honored to have her be represented with the Paseo Arts Festival. And we would like to give this fine art poster to Mayor Cornet today, and I will let Colin talk about the festival itself.
Well, I was unprepared, but I'm prepared. This is 36 years that we've had the Paseo Arts Festival, and going back in the history, I thought, "Well, that was 70-something," and I was in college and I participated in one of the first, first one, two, or three of those festivals. I don't want to say how long ago that was, but we want to say thank you for the city council and the mayor and how they support our area and how it's revitalizing. I've been there 22 years, and it's night and day difference, and we are just progressing and want to do the best for the city and our areas of ours association in giving back to the community and programs that we are funding by this arts festival. And we just want to say our appreciation.
Well, I think we're all proud of the Paseo Arts Festival and the district itself, too. You know, it just takes a group of people taking ownership of their neighborhood and this event to make something truly special, and it brings national attention to Oklahoma City. So we appreciate the work, and I suspect you'll have a few council members who drop by the Paseo Arts Festival every year in the district. Anything else we need to know about the event itself? It starts on Friday, I assume? Yeah? Friday, Memorial Day weekend?
No, it actually starts Saturday.
Saturday?
It's Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Saturday and Sunday, the times are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but the music continues until 11:00, I believe. And Monday, it's 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We will have auxiliary parking at First Christian Church on 36th and Walker. They're one of our community partners. We have, this year, we'll have three different children's areas, and all the activities for the kids will be free. And part of the money we raise during this festival goes for the children's programs and that sort of thing. So, but there's something for everybody. Bring the kids, bring the dogs on a leash, and come and have a good time.
And a lot of people have visitors from out of town on Memorial Day weekend, and this will be a great opportunity for them to show something special in Oklahoma City. All right. All right. Thank you all very much. Let's show our appreciation. And Jo, thank you for the beautiful artwork. Thank you. I believe we have voted on two of the four items from office of the mayor, which leaves a resolution for the Northeast Academy on winning the Class 2A Boys Basketball State Championship, and also the appointment of Scott Buxton to the Oklahoma City Parks Commission. So I'll ask for a motion on those two items. All right, cast your votes. They pass unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 1st and May 8th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 24th. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. I'm on to item five. This is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, outside of the ones that are listed on the agenda, which is 8A1 through 8, item 8C, and item 8P1A, we also have some others, starting on page 27, under item 8G1E, 1324 Northwest 7th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And item M, 826 Southwest 32nd Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to rework that as property maintenance. Then moving to page 28, under item 8I1B, 5300 Briarwood Drive. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C, 3409 South Douglas. We ask that that be stricken. It's now occupied. Item F, 1613 East Park. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 3516 North Pennsylvania. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item I, 3312 South Woodward. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 1405 Northeast 8th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 1412 Northeast 8th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 1432 Northeast 8th. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item P, 2025 Southwest 10th Street. We ask that that be stricken. That is now occupied. Item S, 2120 Northwest 16th Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item T, 4037 Northwest 16th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V, 2844 Northwest 18th Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item Y, 2108 Northeast 23rd Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item DD, 2341 Northwest 33rd Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And finally, item FF, 1101 Southeast 40th. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Any other questions on the MFA?
We'd ask that item F be stricken. That should have been a joint resolution with the MFA and the city, and so we'll bring that back as a joint resolution at a future council meeting.
Okay, so item F is stricken. Looks like we have 14 other items on the MFA. Any comments or questions there?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are three items. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Do we have a second? All right, we're voting on the EAT. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with a consent document. All right, we have a motion in a second. I believe we have some presentations.
We do have a couple of presentations this morning. Mark Cranenberg is here to give us one on the rental facility resolution for the airport, and then Mike Carrier is here also to give us a presentation on convention visitors.
Good morning, Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Director, and have approval from the city manager this morning to offer you all some promotional items that Karen's going to hand out. These are rumble rally rags, which are promotional items from the Parity's Cambers store, which is the retail concession at the terminal at Will Rogers World Airport, and we're very thankful that the Thunder did not need these last night. We hope that they don't. Thank you. I am here on item 6AO, which is to a joint resolution between the Oklahoma City Airport Trust and the city of Oklahoma City to establish a customer facility charge to fund the rental car program at Will Rogers World Airport. This is a presentation that was given by some consultants on April 26th during the airport trust meeting, and we wanted to bring this to you this morning very briefly. As you all know, the airport has been underway for some time planning a consolidated rental car facility at Will Rogers World Airport. We did a public parking study some years ago, and as a part of that, we also wanted to study our rental car operations. And what we found out was we had an insufficient number of ready return spaces at the airport and have for many years. We had only 300 spaces. In 2010, I took 100 spaces from the public parking of our original five-story parking garage so that I could give another 100 spaces to the public to rent cars. Historically, of the 1.8 million passengers that arrive at Will Rogers World Airport each year, there's about 20% that have a propensity to want to rent a vehicle. And every week, our rental car counters, we have eight in the terminal, run out of cars and have to shuttle our customers at the airport to off-site locations in order for them to rent a car from one of their off-site locations. We have four companies out of the eight that have limited service facilities on the airport, and those are used for some fleet storage, some washing, and some fueling of vehicles. But all eight of the companies have to have some sort of their operations off-airport. The rental car industry supports the consolidated rental car facility, and I'd like to talk to you about that facility now in consideration of the customer facility charge, which will fund the rental car program, including the design and construction of this facility. As you can see, the concept, which has been agreed to by all eight rental car companies, this is going to be located directly across from the Southwest Reservation Center on South Meridian. It is just outside the Runway 17R, Runway Protection Zone. We established this site, actually, we looked at several alternatives, and this was the preferred site because it's very intuitive for rental car returns. North on this page is to your right, and so as you come from Airport Road towards the terminal, we'll have a high diesel lane, which will go into the facility. And if you look, Karen is using a little hand on the mouse to sort of show you how they will enter the facility. There will be an inner ring road, which the customers will go around, and this is how they will access the different eight rental car brands that we have at the airport inside that ring road. This is approximately 40-acre site, and in the center of the site, you will see a building, and this is a 20,000-square-foot customer service facility. We are going to try to have as many of these spaces covered, canopy covered, as possible to keep our patrons out of the weather elements. We have an outer ring road, which will be established, and this will be for the transport haulers, the refuelers, trash trucks, anything that has to do with servicing the site. We wanted to keep our customers away and segregated from that part of the facility. Each of the family of brands that we have, and we have four family of brands, we have eight companies, but as you know, rental cars merge and demerge often. And so, we are planning probably to have at this time four quick turnarounds, which will have some limited administrative space, some wash bays, some fueling islands, and we are in the process now of locating where those are on this site, still in concert with negotiations with the rental car companies. And we also have all of the structures preliminary being airspaceed by the FAA. We want to make sure that none of the structures that we will have on this site, including light poles on the outer ring road, are going to be a problem for aircraft operations. So this is the site. Karen? Just a quick internal view of the customer service building. The counters, of course, will be all on one side, will have a large canopy in front. It'll have a large drive, which will be able to handle the bus traffic that will come from the terminal to the consolidated rental car facility, and it'll have plenty of parking for visitors who arrive that are not part of the airport population. The quick turnaround that I talked about, here you see some administrative space, you have maintenance bays, we have some support storage, we have car wash. So there is some minor maintenance that the rental cars do on all of their cars, and again, we're planning to have four of these, not one for every brand, but one for each family of brands. On the customer facility charge itself, I want to point out that these are locally authorized charges, and they will be charged to rental car customers at the airport. These revenues are collected by the rental car companies and later remitted to the airport, and the CFC revenues will be used for various rental car programming. Again, we're going to design and construct a facility, but we also have other parts of our program that can be used for the CFC revenues. Most of the CFC programs, such as the one we're proposing in Oklahoma City, is based on a transaction day basis, which is basically a 24-hour day plus a two-hour grace. And again, all of the rental car companies support the CFC programs as they do at other airports across the country. Approximately 85 airports have implemented a customer facility charge of some sort. Karen, if you got the next one. And here you see a CFC rates at some selected small and medium-sized airports, and you see the ranges can be anywhere from $0.65 to $6.20. And many times, it's a factor of what is the infrastructure that you're having to build. Some people only need a parking lot. Many people need a huge garage. Many people have to develop lots and lots of infrastructure. Here at Oklahoma City, our $4.50 was based on the design and the construction of the facility. As far as planning assumptions, again, $34 million for construction cost, $5 million for soft cost. We're also going to have to have buses, and we have done a study. It looks like we will need eight 40-foot low-floor buses. We're looking at CNG options and also the diesel options. We prefer to try to go CNG if possible. The CFC rate recommendations of $4.50 is going to be pre-collected prior to the facility opening, and of course, there can also be a revision of the CFC rate if it's necessary. We want to start collections as early as July 1. We have to give 45 days notice to the rental car companies, and they're aware of this and are accepting of that. And the collections will be from the rental car customers. It's only used for the people that are going to use the facility, on-airport customers. The CFC revenues are segregated from other airport revenues. In other words, they will not impact, the financing of this facility will not impact the airport's ability to do other projects. And the uses for the CFC revenues will be based on the affordability analysis, with the first priority going to the debt service, and we would like to include the initial cost of the purchase of the buses. It can also go for facility design consultant cost, and of course, the reserves, replacement and expansion reallocation cost, and possibly some O&amp;M costs on the facility and on the So the joint resolution today calls for a $4.50 customer facility charge. It will be in conjunction implemented with our consultants helping airport staff along with the industry to develop a business plan for the leasing of the facility for the rental car customers, and any future joint resolution for any revised rate, we would bring back to the airport trust and to the city. There's a couple of slides that I have on bonds and financing, and I will admit, that's not my area. So I've asked Bill Case with Public Financial Management to come up and just talk very briefly about a couple of slides on the financing of the briefly about a couple of slides on the financing of the facility. Bill?
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The borrowing that's going to occur to fund this project will be through the issuance of bonds. The pre-collection of CFCs that Mr. Krannenberg alluded to will help to reduce the size of bond issue that will be required. The bonds will be junior lien taxable bonds with a full backing of the trust credit. These are bonds that will be on parity with bonds that have been issued for the terminal expansion at the airport, and ones that have ratings currently at A2 with the Moody's and A+ with S&amp;P, which are very strong ratings. It'll be fixed-rate 30-year bonds, and at the 450 rate that is being recommended to be approved, the CFC collections will pay 100% of the debt service, plus provide adequate debt service coverage. This will allow the financing to have minimal impact on the trust's overall debt service coverage and help to preserve those ratings. It'll also preserve capacity at the airport for borrowing for future projects that may occur. Next few slides will just be a brief overview on the actual financing process. The first thing will be, the finance team will put together the documents that are required for the financing. There'll be a series of meetings and conference calls, and it'll take approximately two to four months to get these documents ready to be able to send to the rating agencies. During the rating process, we will put together a credit presentation. They'll provide a complete operational, financial story of the airport as well as the project, including financial projections. Another benefit of having the CFC approved at this point is that the rating agencies will want some assurance that CFC is in place and that revenues will be collected, and there'll be an ability to pay debt service with those. This process with meeting with the rating agencies and receiving the ratings generally takes three to four weeks. After this point, the bond sale process will occur. A preliminary official statement will be mailed out to investors. Underwriters will be marketing the bonds, and they'll have a sale order period that'll determine the final interest rates on the bonds. Then the attorneys will begin putting together documents for the closing, and about two weeks after the actual bond sale, there will be a closing with bond proceeds available to the Airport Trust. This total process will take approximately four to six months. With that, I think that concludes our presentation.
All right, any comments or questions?
Your Honor, just a quick question. On your forecast of revenues, did you anticipate any decrease in the amount of rental cars you might have, amount of cars being rented, I guess?
No, in fact, we have seen an increase in the rental car activity at Will Rogers World Airport.
That's prior to the time you put the CFC in?
Yes, even prior for the time for the CFC.
You don't think the CFC will have any impact on the volume of rental cars?
Yes, in fact, one of the things that we did to calculate the CFC was not just the design cost, but we looked at what early collections would do, and we looked at what would be the transaction days that we would be looking at in order to fund the facility. So yes, transaction days were looked at historically and also projected into the future of about 2% per year growth.
Thank you.
Yeah, David?
Mark, you just might want to explain how you're actually running out of cars. In most instances, the demand for the rental cars right now exceeds the capacity, so expanding this facility will provide for greater number of cars.
Yes.
And I would anticipate your overall revenue will just really go up. I'll just leave it at that.
Absolutely. We do have an insufficient number of ready return spaces. The 2009 study that was done said that at that time, we needed a market of 650 to 675 ready return spaces. And so when we went from 300 to 400 spaces in 2010, that did give a few more rental car spaces for the customers to rent. But again, this facility will not only meet the current demand, but will project out future demand, and we're trying to project out 15 years. We're eventually going to try to have about 850 to 900 ready return cars for the future. I want to point out also that there is a convention center that's planned in the future, and we know that that will have a huge impact on the number of rental cars that will be at the airport.
Mark, the convenience of the customers, did you say that there were outside canopies, or is all of this going to be inside service?
The customer service building is 20,000 square feet, and what we want around that area is a limited number of cars which will be available for ready return. The rental cars will continually shuttle cars back and forth from the fleet storage up and put them in the ready return. And we haven't determined how many spaces we're wanting to cover, but because of the Oklahoma elements of the weather, we want to try to cover as many spaces as we can with the construction budget.
Mark, this is slightly off-subject, but I've been traveling through the last couple of weeks through multiple airports in countries where English is not the primary language. But all throughout those airports, signage is in multiple languages to help facilitate international travel. And as I got home to Will Rogers World Airport and saw an area sign in anything but English, I wondered if we'd ever thought about helping to expand, maybe some simple signage of things like exits and gate numbers and things that might help travelers that don't speak English as their native language.
We can look at that. We have talked in the past about doing a signage study for the airport since the terminal renovation. We did improve the signage with terminal renovation, and when we do that signage study, and we're also looking at some central terminal improvements, eventually we'll do an East Concourse, but I'm very willing to look at that.
If you'd be open-minded, you might just take a look at it.
Absolutely.
If that would be helpful, because I sure couldn't have found my way around without some help.
We can do that.
Any other comments or questions on this item? It's part of the consent docket. We appreciate it, Mark.
Thank you.
And we also have a report from Mike Carrier?
Right, so this is under city manager's reports, but I thought it might be good to pull it up at this time since his budget, the CVB budget is on the consent docket.
I said Mark Carrier. That would be a USC Defensey back. It's Mike Carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here today. We continue to have a good year in the tourism industry. Hotel occupancy continues to climb. Our room demand is good. Our average daily rate for our hotels continues to increase, which is always a positive sign. We're enjoying a very healthy time in Oklahoma City right now. And our role is to try to continue to provide some leadership in that and move us forward by recruiting and soliciting conventions, motor coach, leisure travel of all types to come here. You'll see a report later today. Our hotel tax for the fiscal year is up about 8%, which is considerably higher than what we had projected last year. We believe that that is going to continue. National trends are continuing in that vein. Our hoteliers continue to believe that we will see additional increases and movement as our economy is strong, and we think that with a number of the things that are happening here in both the convention and leisure tourism industry, as well as corporate traffic and other things, that we will continue that. For the first nine months of this current fiscal year, I'll give you a quick update there. We are, in terms of future bookings, we're at just under 80% of our target, so we're ahead of pace. We continue to be ahead of pace booking, anywhere from three to five years in advance of the current date. We have a report called the TAP report that we follow, and they assess what we are doing and how we're going there. So we're seeing some good positive movement. It's always challenging because we have a lot of competitors out there, a lot of other cities that are anxious to see how they can compete with us in this pond, and so we're all out there fishing and trying to do the best that we can. We continue to have some very strong successes. Obviously, things like our horse shows provide us with a bit of an edge in many ways. Construction on barn four and five proceeds very nicely. Our equine clients are looking forward to those barns opening, which should be done by the 1st of August when the Quarter Horse Youth Show comes back to town. So we're looking very good there. As for next fiscal year and our budget request, as we typically do, we facilitated a meeting between the city's finance office and a group of hoteliers. We select a group of hoteliers from around the city, representing different areas. They come in and meet with the city finance department to talk a little bit about what they see as trends, what they're seeing in terms of the potential for additional business, how their business mix is going, and what they feel like would be a reasonable increase in terms of revenues next year, based on where they think the hotel tax will continue to go. With that in mind, there's a recommendation in front of you for next year's budget to increase the CVB's budget, and I want to make sure I get the number right here. From this current year, we were at just over $4 million, I think it was $4,42,000, up to $4.3 million this year. That figure was discussed heavily with the finance department to make sure that they were comfortable with it, and I believe that you will hear from them that they are. We went through the full budgeting process with the Convention and Visitors Commission. At the same time, we were doing that, developing our marketing plan of how that money will be utilized to generate more revenue, to generate more sales tax revenue for Oklahoma City, and continue to feed that pot of bed tax money that supports a number of different things. Commission approved the request. We have some increases in travel budgets. It's getting more expensive. Our job is to go outside of Oklahoma City and try to find business to bring in, and it continually gets more expensive as we get on airplanes and stay in hotels and do exhibits in cities across the country. You go fishing where the fish are, and that's what we do. So some increases in travel, some increases in our advertising and promotion, so that we can tell the story of Oklahoma City. Those are the things that have made us successful, and we're going to continue to do those things with your support and help and the support and help of the Convention and Visitors Commission. I'll be happy to answer questions on either one of these two, either our third quarter report or specific things about our budget request, but we continue to enjoy what we're doing in terms of promoting Oklahoma City and appreciate your all's support. One other thing, just as an FYI informational item, last week was National Tourism Week, and it's a great time when we get to celebrate victories and successes in our industry and continue to talk about Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County as a great place to be. Oklahoma County as a whole generates 34% of the total travel revenue spent in Oklahoma. That's more than the next four counties combined. $2.1 billion a year, supporting over 30,000 jobs here in Oklahoma County. The overwhelming majority of those, about 95%, are in Oklahoma City. So this is a good industry. It's a big industry, and we're proud to be a part of it. And last Tuesday, or yes, last Tuesday night, was the annual Red Bud Awards, and I am very proud to tell you that for the second time in three years, the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau was identified and named as the outstanding tourism promotion agency for the state of Oklahoma. And so your all's support makes that possible, and we appreciate it very much. Be happy to take questions.
Mayor, just a, Mike, if you'd make a quick comment on the announcement of getting the 2014 sports meeting in here. As I understand it, this is probably the smallest market they've gone to, and it's a pretty prestigious event.
Thank you, Councilman. We've been very fortunate and very successful in the sports market. Last week, as a matter of fact, we had, and this is not what the councilman asked me, but I'll tag on to that. Last week, we were the host to a group called the ACES, A-C-E-S. That's the Association of Chief Executives of Sports, the executive directors of the national governing bodies of the Olympics sports for the U.S. We were delighted to have the Bob Sledding Executive Director here. I'm not really sure that we can do a whole lot to help him in Oklahoma City, but we're delighted he came to look. But it was a very successful meeting, and they left very impressed with what they saw here. That's the kind of meeting that we have been very successful in drawing here because of what has happened in the last several years here in Oklahoma City with a lot of different things. What Councilman Mars is referring to, we went to Hartford, Connecticut, a few weeks ago to bid on the 2014 meeting of the National Association of Sports Commissions. A lot of cities have sports commissions, local organizing committees, bodies that bring in or produce major sports events or sports conventions or things of that nature. We were awarded the bid, first time we had ever bid on it. In most cities, it takes them three to five times to bid on this to get it. We got it the first time. They're going to hold their 2014 meeting here. What that means is there will be sports commissions from all over the United States that will be here to see Oklahoma City. More importantly, there will be what are called events rights holders. Ron Radaganda from the Amateur Softball Association is a sports rights holder. He owns events that are farmed out to communities all over the country. There will be a significant number of those people here who will get a chance to see Oklahoma City and see all of the great facilities that we have and the things that are coming as we continue to be a prominent player in the sports industry. So we were very fortunate to receive that and very proud of it, and that exemplifies and typifies the type of business that we're being able to bring in, groups that will come in here to take a look at Oklahoma City for potentially future and expanded opportunities.
Mike?
Yes, Skip?
What do you find to be some of the outstanding features that tend to attract organizations or companies in reference to tourism or just coming to visit Oklahoma City from your perspective? I got two questions, but that's the first.
Okay. There are a lot of different things. First of all, and we hear this everywhere we go, not just in our industry, but in a lot of different things, is the friendliness and the genuineness of people of Oklahoma City. People feel good when they come here. They come here, and they feel good about spending their money here because they feel like they are valued, not just because of the money. They're appreciated for being here. That's a huge asset for us, and people think that it's genuine, and I believe that it really is. The second thing is that they are impressed with what we have done as a community, not just the facilities that we have, but how we embrace activities that come here, whether it's a sports activity, whether it is a convention, a family reunion, motor coaches. People really feel good about being here. The physical assets we have, Bricktown is a great asset for us. What's happening downtown right now, the reaction to the renovations at Myriad Garden have been just phenomenal. How all these things fit together, the ability to move from one facility to another pretty easily, particularly in the downtown area, the things that have happened out on the Meridian Corridor, some of the beautification that's happened out there. It's a little easier to move around out there. Mark left, but our airport, it's easy to get in and out of our airport, and the challenge we have right now with our air service is what everybody is having. I heard it on television this morning, over 50% of the flights that are flown every day are flown in regional jets, so it's limiting the number of seats. But when people get to our airport, they're very impressed with what they see. So there's just a lot of factors that go into that, but people feel good about being here, and when they leave, they go away talking about how well they were treated, how well they were, the respect they received. So people feel good about it, and they are our best sales force in terms of going out and telling other people to come here. On the leisure side of the house, you look at all the attractions we have, from the art museum to cowboy to the activities in the Adventure District, to areas like Stockyard City or the Paseo Arts District. There's a great diversity here, and people really like that. So this is a special place.
Well, that was my second question, was this diversity, the demographics of the city, the culture of the city, is that one of the considering factors that you've noticed? And the other, to tail in on that, has the tribes had very much impact, in your opinion, as it relates to the attraction of Oklahoma City? And I know there's also the issue of tribes that, in reference to facilities outside of Oklahoma City, that I think some people venture out to when they get to Oklahoma City.
Certainly.
How much do you see that being a part of the interplay of tourism in Oklahoma?
It plays a significant role. This is the West, and when you have a facility here like the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum that people from around the country know about. Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum that people from around the country know about, obviously, it's somewhat of a niche market, but it's, it's surprising how many people know about that facility, you know, when you, when you think about it being cowboy culture. People are looking for the real values of the West, and we get a lot of questions about where can I go see, where can I go experience real American Indian culture? I don't want the made-up stuff from Hollywood. I don't want the television images. I don't want the, you know, the, the tiki-taki tourist traps. I want to see the real thing. That's one of the reasons why we're so adamant about getting the American Indian Cultural Center done, is, you know, then we've got cowboys and Indians, the real, the real thing, and, you know, that's, that's important to us. So, it is important, the diversity aspect. We sell people coming to Oklahoma City and spending the night and exploring the region. You know, it's not uncommon for groups or individuals to spend the night here but to drive down to Sulphur to see the Chickasaw Cultural Center and drive back, whether it's a motor coach or a family. You know, and that's great because the more they get out and explore and find out how easy it is to go from Oklahoma City to Guthrie, you know, to, to Sulphur, to, you know, Yukon or to El Reno, and get back to Oklahoma City. You know, this is the hub, you know, and so, it's very important to us, and we're, you know, we continue to sell that and try to cooperate with folks like the Chickasaw Nation and that particular facility and attraction, but many others also.
If you get an opportunity around the Capitol, sell that and let them know that people think we are a very friendly city, a very friendly state, that we don't have a whole lot of hostility in reference to having to have some of the issues that they are promoting.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Certainly.
Other questions for Mike?
Couple, Mike, reading through your, your book, we increased hotel room supply basically by 3,000 since 2006?
Uh, yes, sir.
And you said that there's six to eight that are either under construction or in their final planning?
Correct.
When those six to eight come online, how many, how much increase in hotel room supply would you have?
Right now, we are just under 16,000 in the city, and so, our average hotel size is about 105 rooms, so we expect that to get up to about 16, six to 16, seven with those properties. None of them are huge. We have lost a couple of hotels this year. The market is shifting, you know, we very well may lose in the next two to three years. We may very well lose a couple more hotels. You know, but I think we're going to stay right around 16 to 16, five in the next few years.
But do you, do you know what percent of that 16,000 is downtown, or?
Uh, it's about 10%. We've got 1,600 rooms right now within a half-mile walk of the Convention Center.
Okay.
There are 2,000 rooms in what we define as the downtown area, but within that half-mile walk of the Convention Center, there, I believe it's like 1,620 rooms. We have one hotel under construction right now in that same area that will add about 150 rooms to that total. Right now, the downtown area has the highest occupancy rate and is, I know, last night, downtown was completely sold out.
Yeah.
And that's not an uncommon factor in the downtown, whether there's a basketball game or not.
How many of the six to eight coming online are downtown?
Uh, three that are definite and a fourth that is probable.
Okay.
And those, those four hotels would make up about 500 to 550 rooms.
Okay. You, you talked in your, in your pamphlet that your most significant issue was the airport, and that's, again, that's kind of the Convention, Sports and Leisure Study in 2009 said the same thing. What, are you optimistic, pessimistic, what, I mean, with the bankruptcy of America and...
I don't think American Airlines is going to go away. It may be absorbed by someone else, as we have seen. I mean, I, I can remember when Piedmont Airlines and Allegheny Airlines and some other very good regional airlines flew, and they're now all part of U.S. Airways. TWA and Eastern, and, you know, they've all been absorbed. Northwest is now part of Delta, so at worst, I think American will be absorbed by another company. I think the biggest challenge, as I said a few minutes ago, is that we continue to see a reliance on the regional jets, which limits the number of seats, and every airport in the country is facing that. The only, I shouldn't say everyone, the ones that aren't are DFW and Atlanta, the major hubs where everything's flying into. But any market outside of those handful of major hubs, you know, you're getting a significant number of, of the regional jets. Fortunately, as we understand it, some larger RJ's are coming into, into service. That will help some, but, you know, we're going to need additional service. I know Mark and his staff continue to work on that, you know, and as, as, they're sort of like the hotels, as the demand increases and they see their, their number of requests for seats being turned down, they're going to look at putting on more flights or larger equipment. So, if we're healthy in terms of bringing people in, I think some airline flights will follow.
Okay. Final question, you talked about two studies. Did, did you do these studies by Dr. Fennich and Jeffrey Eastman, or those are national studies that you're using, or?
Yes, the, the study, and I think I referred to the, the Fennick Study in one of my previous comments or sessions with you all. That study basically looks at a mathematical model that, that says how attractive is your community, so that, based on your attractiveness over a whole variety of things that people look at, how likely are you to be able to sell the number of rooms you would like to sell as a percentage? We're kind of where we thought we would be, based on what we have now. We'll do that study again in four or five years, once more things have changed. It's not a study you would do every year because change doesn't happen that fast. It said, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but it said that we should be booking about 375,000 room nights a year. We're at that or slightly ahead of that. So, we're mathematically, we're about where we should be. The other report is called the TAP Report. That's what I referred to a few minutes ago. That report actually pulls information out of our database and compares it to where we need to be three, five, six years out in our sales to be able to fill the hotel rooms that we think we can fill. A lot of convention bureaus use it to see, are we on pace with where we need to be, not for this year, but for three years down the road, or five years down the road? Where are opportunities, you know, which month does we not have much booked, so we need to really focus on that month? We need to do some research, or we need to work with our hotels to do seasonal specials or something of that nature. So, we use that one on a daily basis.
Is it, is that, I mean, can we review that to understand, or?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, David?
Mike, the point that you brought up towards the end of that discussion about looking out three, five, and even later in years as far as demand, I just think when you begin looking at the possibilities for Oklahoma City, you know, we've not had as much activity, say, along the river as what we may have in three to five years as some of these maps projects come online. Certainly, the new Convention Center, I think, will bring in more and more visitors, and I think it's important that we begin looking at that. You know, and going back to the airport, I think it's just going to continue to see more and more activity out there. So, I think your efforts are certainly very important and would encourage you to continue having the success you've had recently. One thing I still believe, and I might as well take this opportunity to mention it, that would assist in, I think, just a variety of ways, is if we could get light rail from downtown out to the fairgrounds, and then along Meridian Avenue where we do have hotels, all the way back to the airport, to be able to have light rail coverage from the airport to the fairgrounds to downtown, and then eventually out to Tinker, I think makes so much more sense than what some of the other proposed routes have indicated. So, you know, it would also help, and I think we could have coverage over to the Native American Cultural Center with that type of light rail, and it could go through the Core to Shore Park where the, the train station is now that's currently not being utilized. So, anyway, I just think it's very optimistic for the city, I think the airport, especially as we see the expansion that's going to take place on the east side of the airport, not only traffic from airline usage, but just the activity once the east side of the airport begins to be developed, mainly for retail and office space. I think the demand for that area and the need for additional transportation services is just going to continue to increase. Thank you.
Mike, of the hotels that you stated that may, we may lose a couple in the future, do you still have hope that there is going to be a hotel in the Adventure District?
Yes, sir. There are people doing due diligence on a number of different projects around the area, including the Adventure District and the northeast side of the city.
And do you have any updated information as it relates?
No, sir.
See there? On the witness stand, you'd be in trouble. In reference to Lincoln Plaza.
No, sir. Yeah, I know that, again, developers do a lot of due diligence, and I know that that is ongoing by a number of developers in the community that are, that are looking at projects.
Lincoln Plaza?
They are still doing their due diligence, yes.
Okay, if you want to call it the Lincoln Plaza, the old Lincoln Plaza. All right.
All right.
I'm finished.
Other comments or questions for Mike? We appreciate your work. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Ready to vote the consent docket?
Your Honor, I have a question on H.
Okay.
This is probably directed to the city manager on what exactly is Clancy going to do for the city, and how will their work integrate with the project we have to put smart meters all over town?
Well, Clancy is the parking control systems we have at the parking garages.
Well, how come then, if they're in parking garages, how come COPTA doesn't have this in their budget?
I'm sorry?
How come COPTA doesn't have it in their budget?
Because, I don't know if I can answer that. I'll get some help that will come in here and answer that for me. I assume because the Transportation Department is, is a part of the city, it's funded, former city operation, Craig. Clancy Agreement Item 6H.
Yes, that's really just the parking enforcement system that's used by our courts department.
Oh, it's a handheld.
Right. And so, it's just continuing that software agreement with them for that system that we use for the parking enforcement as we write parking tickets and it processes that through.
So, all they do is write parking tickets with their system?
Well, this, this is the system that we use that is in the...
With handheld devices.
Right, and using the parking...
And that's worth $70,000 a year to us.
Right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Item 6Q and 6R are both, I guess what I would classify as falling under some of our social service funding. One project is the approval of two Shelter Plus Care Program renewal grants with the Housing and Urban Development, and the second is a reallocation of about $290,000 into the Down Payment Assistance Program. We're moving into spring season and anticipated increases in home purchasers, and this should be able to assist as many as 45 additional families with downpaying, down payment assistance. It's been a very successful program, and it's another one of our sort of social service grant pass-throughs that we get from the federal government that I wanted to mention. And 6AJ is also just a mention, but it's in every one of our wards, upgrades to our school zone safety systems, and something that very much, I think, is on everybody's mind and really an important project. And so, I just wanted to mention that that was all underway.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket before we vote? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Onto the concurrents docket.
[inaudible].
Okay, we have a motion in a second. A lot of Maps for Kids items on the concurrents docket this week.
Easy.
Are we ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. Items 8A, 1 through 8 have already been deferred until May 29th, not been to the Planning Commission yet. Moves us on to item 8B. It's a zoning case in Ward 7 at 10330 North Hudson Avenue. It's a simple abide plan unit development and would be a new spud. Larry?
Let's actually, Skip.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is, it is Ward 7, isn't it? I was thinking it was Ward 3. Skip?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Uh-huh. This is a matter that I believe that... I'm sorry. We've had on several occasions, and it's been deferred. Is Mr. Dyes here, Dean? Okay, and he is the representative for the applicant, and I believe that there is, is there someone that signed up as...
Yes, there is. John Walker has signed up in protest.
Mr. Walker here?
Yes.
Okay. I think we've had this presentation once before. So, Mayor, if, if I would make, could we have Mr. Walker to come forth in reference to his opposition to this?
Sure.
And hear him first?
This is item 8B.
Thank you. I'm John Walker. I live at 3509 Northwest 69th Street in Oklahoma City. I'm a longtime resident of Oklahoma City. I was born here. In 2000, the Oklahoma City executed a 20-year master plan that called for the area that includes and surrounds the property that is the subject of this rezoning to be a place for people, a mixed-use area that would include offices, retail, and residential uses. In 2009, the Northwest Sector Plan reaffirmed that vision. Beginning in the first part of 2010, however, the Planning Commission and you began to change on an ad hoc basis this vision by allowing a small patchwork of industrial uses to come into the area. No particular decision has etched in stone the future of this area, however, until now. This decision is critical for this area and the future it is, or to become. A move to allow I-2 in this part of the Broadway Extension Corridor will create along Oklahoma's most important commercial corridor yet another place for things. Do not abandon your planner's vision, particularly now. Do you read the paper? Have you read about the Lincoln at Central Park? Most everyone in Oklahoma City considered this portion of land a poor location for an apartment project. The area was considered so bad, it was passed over by even marginal industrial users that are the ones, like the ones moving into the area I am in now. But yet, a local developer saw a potential and built a project. It just sold for more dollars per unit than any apartment project in Oklahoma that I'm ever aware of, including Mr. Henderson's flagship property a couple of blocks from here, from where I'm standing. Why? It's in the corridor. Give areas a chance to become what the city planners forecast they can become. It happened at the Lincoln, and it can happen in other locations in Oklahoma City along this corridor, but not here in Oklahoma City if you allow this rezoning. The people will go to Edmond. I made my commitment to this area with my heart and dollars years ago, based on your representation of what this city once felt no knew that this whole corridor could be. Mr. Savilek's building was a great start, but with a yes vote to rezone this area, my vision of being part of a quality area will die. One more place for things, or one more place for people. I choose a place for people. I choose Oklahoma City. What do you choose? Please vote no. Do not rezone this area.
A couple of questions here. You're, so this is a, it's already a spud, it's kind of in the middle of an R1 area. It's your hope that it would be residential in the future? It's your hope that it would be residential in the future?
My hope is it would be a mixed-use facility. The Broadway Extension is a high-intensity corridor that it has tremendous potential. It's, in my opinion, it's just like the Central Expressway or the North Dallas Toll Road would be to Dallas. And yet, we're allowing uses that I believe are well below its potential. It is being designed, and we're spending millions of dollars to upgrade the capacity of the Broadway Extension. And yet, within that corridor, we're beginning to allow facilities that no way resemble what it can be or could be with the right kind of planning and the right kind of user.
What do you envision? Tell me what you think is...
I think projects like the Lincoln could occur all along the Broadway Extension on either side. We're seeing tremendous growth right now on the east side of the Broadway Extension in the area of Britton Road. The west side of Britton Road could be, the west side of the Broadway Extension, the same area could provide the same benefits. But yet, we're letting metal buildings be built, outside storage, no fencing. The problem was, this area was platted long ago before the city required developers to build streets and utilities. It was sold off. It was just looked past for years, and those problems consequently, there's no covenants restrictions that control the area, and these problems have just perpetuated. And consequently, the... I don't know how to say this politely, but the bottom feeders, the people that want to make the... To do the least possible thing they can do with the whole piece of land, for instance, use it just for storage of heavy construction materials, for used construction equipment, for these kinds of products show up because it's conveniently located to a high-intensity commercial area, and I think that's absolutely the wrong vision for this city. And these choices, those, the decisions that have allowed industrial uses south of 104th Street are just now being made. This area was zoned R1. It's not an R1 area. It is a more vibrant area. It has much greater potential than an R1 area. But it's not to be a construction yard. It's not to be a yard for storage of heavy construction materials. It's not for doing work on heavy equipment. This could be first-class apartment projects. This could be locations for offices, just like Mr. Savilek has built out there, a really nice office building that attracts great potential. And if we allow this kind of product to occur, Mr. Savilek is to my east, this product is to my west. I'm in between. If this product goes its direction, my product will become what this product is going to be. If this product does not occur, my product has a good chance of becoming what Mr. Savilek has already realized in the area.
Yeah, where is your property?
My property is just to the southeast of this property, catty corner there. I have five acres that would have been immediately west of the Savilek property, which fronts on Broadway Extension. And I'm on 101st Street. This property's on 102nd Street, but it's on 103rd Street. And we're holding our breath. We're holding out, obviously. People want to use the property for another reason. We have ample property that has been zoned over along the BNSF rail line. Mr. Garrett just zoned 40 acres over there for I-2. There's hundreds of acres of I-2 that already exist along, primarily, we're trying, they're trying to encourage that kind of development along the railroad track. That's great. I think that's where it should go. It's only a few hundred yards further to the west of this property. But this is in the Broadway Extension corridor. It's in the area we're trying to protect for the most intense and most high-quality development of this city. It's the most visible area of our city. Is this the kind of presentation we want to make to the people that come to the city? Do we want to present it as a storage yard for construction materials or the long-term abilities that has been... The vision in sense to me was realized when Mr. Tannenbaum built the Lincoln at Park Central. It was a... Nobody conceived that in Oklahoma City as being a good area for apartments, but yet, it was a well-qualified project. He did a tremendous job in building it, and he's now sold that project for the highest price I think apartments have ever brought in Oklahoma. People recognize the quality. They recognize the importance of the commercial corridor, and I think that's being overlooked by the council, and that's why I'm opposed.
All right, thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dyes, if I may...
Sure.
Dean Dyes, Commercial Promirent Express, here to represent the applicant on this project. Did you have a question? Is that...
Just what will be the actual use, and I understand that, I think one of the problems that's kind of confusing here is that the council approved this back in February of 2011.
Actually, it was approved by Planning Commission on February the 9th of 2011, I believe, and it was passed by City Council on April the 5th of 2011.
Is that right? Okay, all right. And the only problem that we are back here now is because there was a...
Accidentally used left out.
That was left out of the original applicant application, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that was that you wanted really to have heavy equipment, but the original application was just automotive repair? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what is the heavy equipment?
It's just the service of their tractors that pull their trailers and stuff like that.
So, it's not a full service to the public service?
No, it's just for one company's use.
To maintain their own vehicles?
Right, maintain their own vehicles.
Okay. And because of that, you had to request a modification to add heavy equipment into the application?
Had to add this use to what we already had, yes.
Dean, what kind of screening or fencing or protection from the rest of the neighborhood are you, or is the applicant offering?
Well, they didn't require anything, but I mean, to the west of this property is pumping oil wells. To the east of this property is a very large creek that pretty well takes up the whole property. I mean, in other words, nothing would ever be able to be built. The south half of this property, there's no plans to build on it. He's only using the north half of that, really. He does own the entire block. But to the north up there, that's all changing to industrial as well. In fact, the two that you see immediately to the north right now, they're working on that R1. I don't know who's doing it, but I knew though there's a company that's buying that and turning that into industrial as well. I've been working in this area for about the last six or seven years. The I-2s that you see on up north there by, I guess that's 104th. We built some buildings in there, and this same man owns, on the north side of 104th, another I-1 tract, too, as well. But it's pretty well all industrial. I mean...
Well, but there's some pretty wonderful commercial development along that site, too, and whether it's the Savilek Building or the Bolt Building or the...
To the east over along Broadway Extension, yes.
Right.
Yes.
What is the action? What is the distance from your proposed project from the service road of Broadway Extension?
I'd say it's probably somewhere between a half, maybe to a mile, something. I don't know what's the actual...
It's about 1,200 feet.
Is that what it is?
Yes, there's... This block here is about 600, and then just off the map, there's another block, so the depth is just under a quarter of a mile.
A quarter mile.
And the Planning Commission has recognized that the Broadway Extension is a corridor that they need to protect, and there's been several PUDs developed in there with office buildings, as the protester spoke about. The question here is how wide is that corridor along Broadway? And there's a pattern here that's already been established when this was zoned in 2011 that, you know, things east of here are going to be in that, considered in that corridor, and these are going to be developed more with residential uses, I mean, industrial uses. And there's already a pattern of industrial uses out there.
So, the Planning Commission has already identified a distance from the Broadway Extension as a part of the corridor to the west that would be outside of the corridor. Is that right?
They've identified that Broadway Extension's a corridor, and then they'll review applications as they come in. There's not a set distance, but they determined when they recommended this a year ago that anything west of that line there is probably appropriate for the industrial that has, that area's been transitioning at. And they've already approved multiple PUDs along the corridor there on Broadway Extension that have limited to office, and there's been standards for the buildings, those types of things. And that's how, you know, cases in the future will be presented to you.
With staff, if you take 1,200 feet from the corridor of the Broadway Extension, what are some of the businesses that are presently in existence in that area that's directly west of the 1,200, which would be more like the boundary lines of the applicant's project?
Well, just north of this, a block north of this is a landscaping company. There's one right to the north in that I-1 that it looked like a small warehouse with some commercial trucks. I'm not, didn't have a sign, so I'm not exactly sure what their company was, but it was a, looked like a fleet, several small trucks. And then back in the I-2, there's a couple of industrial buildings. This existing PUD already allows I-2 moderate and industrial uses, plus the cars, and then he's proposing to add that use. So, that zoning's already in place, has been for a year.
So, we could leave the existing putt in place?
Right.
Deny this change?
Good.
Leave it in place, and it would permit vehicles but not trucks?
Right. That's correct. And I-2, the moderate, I-2 moderate industrial use unit has a wide range of industrial. You could put a small storage yard in there with an office building. I mean, there's multiple things that they could do, and that's why we recommended that this, adding this use didn't really, in our opinion, impact the effect of this zoning application because it's already zoned industrial.
Well, excuse me, are there any photographs of this area that...
Yeah, there's one in the packet there.
That aerial view?
Uh-huh.
Well, I was just wondering, as far as just to give me a better understanding of the existing buildings surrounding this piece of property, is what, do we have any of those?
They're mostly metal buildings.
They're just metal structures. The one to the north there that he was describing a minute ago is probably the newest one on the south side of 104th there. It's about 20,000 square feet, I believe, on that lot, and then there's one directly across the street on the north side of 104th. And then there's several new ones back to the west of Hudson there, right on the west side of Hudson.
Do any of these buildings, the other businesses, do they have any type of site fencing?
Yes. Uh-huh.
The SPD requires them to meet the standard landscaping requirements in our current ordinance, so that provision's in there. So, if, where he abuts residential, he would have to provide screening. Now, if he abuts industrial, there's no screening between industrial, but that standard's in the SPD that they meet the current landscape ordinance.
Okay, and the, and Mr., the protester, is it Mr. Ford?
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, I apologize. Mr. Walker's property, is it presently being used for any type of industrial use?
No, I don't believe, I believe it's vacant.
The metal building you have on the south side of 104th Street is a four-story, is a metal building, as is the one on the north side of 104th Street. They were both moved in the last year. They were both completed in the summer because there's no sanitary sewer to serve the site. So, the fact that they weren't even required to, you said, to lay a party con, or to add concrete, approaches, again, these are all signals that you want to see in a view corridor. It's the, in my opinion, primary commercial corridor of Oklahoma City. Sure, my shooting for that, maybe Oklahoma City, which has just been talking about all of the good things that are happening in Oklahoma City down the drain, the party precinct, the very gardens, all of the new things that are having, I thought of Lincoln as a central park, that's managed by it within the last couple of years.
You're gonna, you're either gonna have to sit up to the microphone or sit down, one of the two. We can't have you speaking from the fifth pew.
I apologize. I was pointing out that there has been two buildings constructed in this area. If you know from the map, everything around this is zoned R1. So, really, this area hadn't transitioned to industrial. The two recent, most recent cases are the two I-2 properties just south of 104th Street. There is only one building that's been built on those properties. They're owned by the same person. It's a landscaping company. He built a small metal building. The property's not served by sanitary sewer. There are no concrete driveways. There's no concrete parking. There's no screening, and the same is true of the property on the north side of 104th Street. I wasn't protesting changes north of 104th Street. North of 104th Street is another matter. South of 104th Street, all the way down, was pretty much all the way to Classen, was undeveloped property with the exception of Mr. Savilek's building and another office building south of him that was constructed a number of years ago. These two office buildings form the basis for, in my opinion, for, and based on the planning that Oklahoma City had done and their recommendations in their 2000 plan and in their 2009 plan, was that this area should be reserved for higher-intensity uses that would include office buildings and apartment buildings primarily. And I think that vision has been lost, and there have been some mistakes that have been passed through the Planning Commission, and I protested all of them, not north of 104th Street, only south of 104th Street. And it's a major transition line, and that's why it was a tremendous mistake to allow the little metal, but a one little metal building isn't going to change the area. This facility will change the entire area, and it will take a whole nother track, and it will be, for my lifetime, it will be nothing more than what that is. And I hope you understand that the long-range impact of this decision today for this 40, 50, 60, 70 acres that is from the Broadway Extension to Classen, south of 104th, down to Britton Road, I think it can be something special or it can be just another place in Oklahoma City for things. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, I want to clarify in my mind. All we're voting on this morning is the addition of one more use. This has already been zoned I-1 or I-2. So, in any way sympathetic, we might be with Mr. Walker's position. There's nothing we can do about it now, absent rezoning of that area, and that would have to be the applicant's choice or the owner's choice.
But we don't have to add the additional use?
No, we don't have to, but we can't change... Mr. Walker's comments, as I, were related to that being zoned industrial, not some, he didn't mention any specific use, objection to the specific use, which is objecting to the fact it was zoned I-2.
Skip, do you have a motion or more discussion?
Well, and I agree with Councilman Ryan. I mean, this is, for all practical purposes, a done issue that has been previously passed by the Planning Commission, voted on by this council, the inadvertent issue of not addressing the need that they may have for their own equipment. And I really hope that this is exactly where we are in reference to the need to have... in reference to the need to have the heavy repair. Because if, in fact, when we pass this, that was part of, of what the concern in the, in the use of the, the, the application for that service, the fact that it happens to be now that you have to repair your own or maintain your own vehicles, that requires you to, to modify the use. Is that right? And, you know, to that extent, I, I'm, and I'm sympathetic in reference to, to both positions, but I think that right definitely outweighs the issue in reference to what we have previously, you know, passed. And, and also, I think this whole issue of these corridors, we need to either be a little bit more definitive about, you know, setting a true boundary for, for our corridors, as opposed to taking each one on an individual basis. And, you know, of course, the, the planning commission, and I give due respect to, to the planning commission's position as it relates to this. I think 1,200 feet outside of where the Broadway Extension is, and I'm well familiar with the Broadway Extension, the service road, and some of the other businesses that are, you know, aligned to the Broadway Extension. And I just don't think that this has that type of, of negative impact as far as the growth and the vision of the development of the corridor of a Broadway Extension. So I recommend that we, we pass this and move on.
Okay. Comments or questions? Cast your votes. Passes eight to one.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Do we need the emergency on this?
Yes.
I'd move the emergency then.
Cast your votes on the emergency. Passes nine zero. All right, item 8C has been deferred until May 29th. Item 8D is a public hearing. I think Bob Teener is here to make some modifications for the council. This is the second time we've had an opportunity to, to look at this issue. So we'll have an opportunity for people to speak if they wish, but I'll turn it over to Bob.
Just briefly, we had two corrections that we need to make on the ordinance. We had two places where livestock and domesticated fowl were struck from the ordinance, and they real, we need to remove that strikeout. So at the final hearing on the 29th, there'll be an amendment on the ordinance that has that correction. It doesn't affect the ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under this item on 8D? Okay, looks like we're good to go, and this will be brought up for a final hearing next time. Yeah, Larry?
I just have a, a comment, and I don't know how many of you saw the letter to the editor in the paper this week about this issue. There are a number of folks, some number, I don't know how many, who do not like the idea, at least one, that does not like the idea of returning cats, these community cats, back into the neighborhood. And all we're doing today is passing this forward. There'll be another opportunity at, when this comes back, will not, Bob, for anybody who is, is opposed to this to come and make their position known.
All right, there'll, there'll be a final hearing next, or in two weeks.
In two weeks. So I just wanted to go in record saying that if, if you are not in favor of community cats, there is a way to have your, your opposition known in two weeks. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. David?
Your Honor, Larry, I just want to say the same thing, basically, and just assure people, there's more than one person who's against this policy. And it's, they just don't like the concept or idea of returning the cats back to the area they are, I don't know what they want to do with them, but they don't want them returned. And I've explained what my understanding of the policy is, but just as Larry encouraged those individuals to show up at the next meeting, I, I too would encourage you to attend and, and voice any concerns that you have on this. Thank you.
All right.
When they're voicing their concerns, I wish they would voice an alternative as well, just to suggest something else we could do with the cats.
That's always helpful.
It's a problem.
All right, how about a motion to move this forward? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8E. This is also the second time we've had this in front of us. It's some housekeeping on some traffic codes. It's a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under 8E? All right, how about a motion then? And a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a new ordinance for us to consider, and Craig Freeman is here to guide us through the process. Craig?
Thank you. What we have in this ordinance amendment today is basically intended to help us with the enforcement of our sales tax. You know, the majority of our businesses in the city pay their sales tax as they're required, but there are some businesses that don't pay their sales tax. And of those businesses that don't pay their sales tax, many of them are collecting the sales tax from their customers, but not remitting it to the city and to the state. We have many different programs. We actually contract with the Tax Commission. They collect sales, the sales tax on our behalf. And we have many programs that we implement to help us with sales tax enforcement to support the work of the Tax Commission. Our city treasurer's here, Bob Ponkill, and our assistant city treasurer, Jason Martinez, head this program and provide leadership in being able to work to provide information to the Tax Commission to help them have additional information for the tax enforcement. What we're doing today is amending the ordinance to allow us to be, we had an ordinance in place that there was a violation, violating the city's sales tax ordinance would result in a Class B offense. We haven't used that for prosecution purposes in the past. And what we would like to do is introduce a new program to issue sales tax collection letters from the city to these businesses that are delinquent. We receive this information from the Tax Commission. They verify it for us to make sure that everything's accurate. We would, can send out tax collection letters to these businesses, give them a period of time to respond, and if they don't respond, we will have the ability to act upon that and file a citation against those businesses. In the past, it's been a Class B offense, which requires a jury trial. And this change will leave the Class B offense for any recurring offenses, but in the first offense, the first violation of the ordinance, that it would be a Class A offense, which does not require a jury trial, has a little bit lower maximum fine, but allows us to act more quickly. And we believe we'll get better response that way. You know, at the end of the day, the goal isn't to issue citations. The goal is to collect the sales tax. And that's what we want to do, is provide additional motivation to be able to get businesses cooperating in paying the sales tax as they should. And again, we're targeting those that aren't complying with the law. This shouldn't affect the ones that are complying with the law. We, right now, do have a program that we're collecting, and the efforts that are managed through our treasurer's office so far this year have generated about $1.3 million in additional sales tax and information they've passed along to the Tax Commission. We believe this will be just a further enhancement. Give us another tool in the toolbox to help enforce our sales tax. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Pat?
Approximately, how many entities do we have that are either improperly or failing to report their sales tax?
There's a report that we have, and the report covers multiple years, going back through history. There's like 1,100 businesses on this report. Many of those businesses that are on that report are, I believe of the 1,100, are those the active ones? So there's 1,100 that are active businesses still that have, from some period of time, from the current going back, and it could be many years back, a delinquent, an outstanding, you know, delinquent, sales tax amount that's owed.
Would the fine be, in effect, every time he failed to report properly? Or any, and with my, my point is, is the fine high enough to get their attention? Is the taxes they've collected not paid, does it exceed $500?
The, the, the amount that's due from these entities, in, in many cases, is very large amounts. And so it's going to be a challenge to get some of them to move. The Tax Commission's been pursuing them already.
Councilman, what we, what we've tried to do in the last several years on our code enforcement provisions is take this approach where the first offense is a Class A, and second and subsequent can be filed as a Class B. Sometimes we continue on with Class As and, and have multiple citations. The Class A offense is a maximum of a $500 fine. And you can pay less than that to close out the amount. But the difference between that and a B is that we can get to trial a lot more quickly on a Class A offense. And if a person does not choose to come into compliance, then daily citations could occur, as long as they're out of compliance. So it just provides more tools in the arsenal. If all we have is this Class B offense, it can literally take months, depending a lot of times on the defense attorney, for us to actually get to a jury trial.
Cindy, why the Tax Commission, if they can provide the list of those individuals who have not paid the taxes, I mean, they're vested with the duty to collect. I mean, that's the state agency that's, that's established specifically for that. What's, what's the gap if, if we're not getting our money, and they're in charge of collecting the tax? Their enforcement is not enough? Because they can close a place down. So why, why can't they do their job in reference to the enforcement arm of the law that's given to them by the legislature? That all those individuals that, that they're, that are supposed to be paying the tax, you know, either they use the enforcement authority that they have, or they can put a, a notice of closure on the place until the taxes are paid. And when they do pay their taxes, do we get our money then?
Because the Tax Commission has limited resources for enforcement. We don't think they're doing a, a job that's, that's, we think there's an upside for us to, to assist in that process. They have very limited resources.
So now they're willing to let us do something on our own?
Yes. And that's been a change within the last year or two.
Right. The Tax Commission has worked very closely with us in this, and they do have limited resources. They are putting more resources into this, enhancing their own efforts. But it's allowing us more freedom to be able to participate as well. And, you know, we think we can target, you know, be more strategic in the way we're approaching this, and target the businesses that are the, the largest offenders. And we think we can work in partnership with the Tax Commission, but get better results.
But we won't have any authority to, to stop an operation of a business from operating for failure to pay taxes?
That's correct. That, that's my understanding.
So all we'll be doing is issuing multiple citations that come down to court, and the tax that's owed, will they have to post a bond equal to that tax when they're issued the citation?
We have a limit to our jurisdiction based on the Oklahoma Constitution, and we can't require a bond in the amount of the tax owed or anything like that. A bond is simply securing your appearance in court. So that has to go along with the normal bond amounts that we set. And we're limited jurisdictionally to our fines. Now, what can happen is if we have a repeat offender that doesn't want to come into compliance, we can file a, an offense as a Class B offense on the second or subsequent offenses, which of course carries up to six months jail time and a higher fine of $1,200. And so that is the limit constitutionally to our court, to any municipal court. That's the court of record, that's the maximum that we can do.
But that's not our goal. Our goal is to get some notice out there and get some attention and try to, try to get these people, for whatever reason, to follow the law and to, and to submit those taxes that they're most likely collecting.
It's, we're, we're, we are, we are, have reasonable expectations going into this. We don't think this is a be-all, end-all by itself. It's just another tool, another way that we have to try to access this. Like I said, the other efforts that are going on right now have generated about $1.3 million so far this year. And so we're confident this does provide enhancement, the services we're providing. And we just want another way that we can try to, it'd be more creative and flexible, I mean, and give us more flexibility in the way that we approach this.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, you know, if, if you're a private business, and you were going through tough times and had to make some cuts, you probably wouldn't start cutting the opportunities you have to collect revenue. But yet, the state of Oklahoma does that. When they go through tougher times, they, they protect certain aspects of their state government. And one of the aspects that they continually cut has been the Oklahoma Tax Commission, which is supposed to be collecting revenue, not just for them, but for us too. And so I think what we're saying is that we, we don't necessarily think they have the enforcement abilities to go out and collect the tax for us. Their issue is their issue. But as far as we're concerned, we're not getting the type of enforcement and compliance that we need, and this is to, to try to address that.
Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I would encourage that we adopt this. Many of these businesses are actually operating as an agent, whether it's for the state or for the city, in collecting sales tax from their customers, and they're withholding that from the state or city. So I don't have a whole lot of sympathy in those instances. Now, when there's a mistake, sure, I'd give them all the flexibility to correct that mistake, and you do encounter those mistakes. But when people are purposely collecting sales taxes, just like trust fund taxes with respect to payroll taxes, there's a higher level of responsibility to those, for those businesses to make sure those taxes are finally remitted to the proper organization. I would like to take this time, though, to encourage, especially with our outside auditors as we're looking at use tax, to also focus on separately incorporated cities such as stockyards, because there's businesses in locations like that that are actively advertising the fact that they're not subject to the same level of sales taxes as people within the city are subject to. And I think there's a, a lot of missed use tax from customers that go into those locations, purchasing items. And these are businesses, I mean, these are wholesalers that are doing this, and they've got a unfair advantage in comparison with vendors in Oklahoma City. And you can go out there to stockyards and recognize that, in the, especially in the area of construction, there is no construction going on out there. So all the thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars of sales that are occurring, the products are being used within the city limits. So they're subject to use tax. I would encourage us to target those businesses, make sure they're in compliance, and then take it a step further, like the state normally does. Look at their vendors and make sure their, their customers, I mean, are submitting the appropriate amount of use tax. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Gary?
A quick question, and if you covered this and I missed it, I apologize. How often does a business remit their taxes to the, to the state? Is it monthly?
Monthly.
Is our $500 fine, is that a one-time fine? Or can, can it be assessed 500 per reporting period?
Each day is a separate offense. So the first time of the month that it's due, that you don't pay it, is the first day. And then every day that you don't pay it thereafter is a separate offense.
So in theory, the $500 fine could be much larger than that, depending on how many reporting periods they've missed sending in the tax.
And I, I want to make clear, unless you put this in the schedule that's set out by ordinance for council to establish the amount that you can pay at the counter to close out a case, the actual fine on the Class A offense would be probably about $187 with the fine and cost. So unless you establish that there's a, a higher fine than that. There's a maximum of 500 that could happen if they go to trial, but the amount that you could go pay at the counter and close out your case without a trial is lower.
And we could, we could, though, as Councilman Morris was pointing out, that if we decided to and had one that we felt like we would get better results, we could actually file separate citations on each day they're in violation, which would add to that, right? For each violation?
They don't add to it, they're separate offenses. So every day, you'd have that ability for?
So if they're 12 months behind in paying taxes, we could file 12 offenses on them? 12 reporting periods?
It could be for every day.
12 times, it would, you could have 365 separate offenses.
Yeah, that was my, my original question. If, if they're not required to, to send it in only once a month? Well, okay. You're saying daily?
The question, it was due.
It would seem that we would only be able to cite them for each time they were supposed to send it in, which is a monthly deal, not a daily deal. But, but as it is, but as it may. We could cite them for multiple times of not reporting in this ordinance. And even though it's 180, it may be 180 times 12 times, or whatever it may be.
That's right. And this also makes clear that it's a separate offense for failure to report as well as failure to pay. So each one of those is a separate offense.
The citation is two citations.
Sure could be. Some people may report and not pay.
Okay. Everybody understands, it's just being introduced today, and we'll have other opportunities to, to look at it. But a public hearing will be held on May 29th for the item. All right, how about a motion? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Looks like we have 15 properties listed. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8H, it's a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8H?
This is in Ward 6.
You're right. This is a single item. I was looking at the long list of unsecured structures. This is a public hearing regarding one single dilapidated structure in an HP district, and it is in Ward 6.
Russell, do you have any comment on this? I didn't have a chance to go by and see it. Just...
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right.
Move that we declare it.
All right, we're voting on item 8H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we're on 8I, which is a public hearing regarding a long list of unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a couple of revocable permits. The first is a new leash on life. They're going to hold a 5K run and a 3K dog jog, which will take them through Wards 4, 6, and 7. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item or tell us more about it? All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J2, it's OKC Motorsports holding the 2012 Ozarka OKC Nationals. Mike, you want to come up and tell us more about it? Mike McCullough is here. He's promoting the event on June 8th, 9th, and 10th on the River.
Morning. Morning. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is our fourth annual race on the Oklahoma River, and fourth year I've done it anyway. We'll have approximately 100 race teams from all over the country. Of course, with our river, it has, besides the rowing and kayaking, it is the premier liquid speedway in the country. We literally have the nicest venue for this sport in the United States. Next year, we'll do a little night racing also. When the lights are up, there's only one other venue in the United States that has lights to do night racing, so that makes us unique in another matter. I'd just like to thank the mayor, the council, city staff, police, fire, Public Works, and Parks Department really helped us a lot to put this event on, and we have a special announcement in regards to our troops that'll be made this Thursday. And just a sneak preview, they all will be invited as our guests on Thursday, thanks to the support of the Chickasaw Nation and a number of other sponsors who are allowing us to do that. If you have any other questions, Mayor, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right, hope for good weather.
Mike, excuse me, whereabouts do you attend this at? I mean, where do you get...
You go to the Boathouse area.
Oh, the Boathouse?
Yes, we race from the Lincoln Bridge to I-35. They race about 1,000 feet. We need about a third of the river to race and 2/3 to slow down.
All right, thanks and good luck.
Thank you all.
How about a motion? Cast your votes on item 8J2. Passed unanimously. Item 8K is a couple of revocable right-of-way use permits. The first is the 2012 Downtown Dash, which is in Ward 6. Anyone here promoting this item? And we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Allison Schumate, Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, 211 North Robinsons, Suite 225. We're once again gearing up for our fourth annual Downtown Dash. Very excited to have this very unique night race downtown. We have both a 5K and a 10K length. Having great signups so far. St. Anthony has once again come on as our sponsor and allowing us to use their great facilities to start the race. Gearing up in just three short weeks. Signups are still going on on our website, downtownoklamacity.com, and the great thing about this race is that all of the proceeds go to downtown beautification, so really looking forward to finding a wonderful project that we can use the funds that we raised from the race to beautify downtown.
All right, thank you very much. How about a motion on item 8K1?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K2 is for the Oklahoma City Pro-Am Classic Criterion, which will be held June 2nd on Northwest 10th Street down to 7th Street, and looks like Chad Hodges is here. Chad, you want to come forward? And you'll be holding an event on January... June 2nd. You want to tell us about it, Chad?
Yes, sir. It's the first annual Oklahoma City Pro-Am Classic. It's a cycling race that'll take place in Automobile Alley. The first race will kick off at 11:00 a.m. The last race will end around 11:00 p.m.
All right, and this is in Ward 6.
Chad, tell us a little bit about how this came to Oklahoma City, and you modeled it after something in Tulsa and got bigger dreams, I think.
In Tulsa, they have an event called Tulsa Tough. It's a three-day cycling event, and the payout's over $100,000. Brings in some of the top pro cyclists in the nation, and this year, we were able to partner with Sandridge Energy and bring the Pro-Am about, and our hope is to, this year, we offer it on Saturday. Next year, it'll be hopefully a Friday-through-Sunday event, and we'll gain some national status and get on some other racing calendars as well.
Well, I sure appreciate all the work you've done with our staff to make this first-time event what looks like a really big success.
Thank you for all your help.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We're voting on item 8K2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8L is a resolution which would amend the OKC plan, and Russell Claus is here to tell us about it.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Glad to see all these other people showed up to hear this today. This is an amendment to the comprehensive plan that is in response to a plan unit development application that we received on North Lincoln. The application was to rezone a piece of property in an area designated as standard industrial. It is the old Lincoln Hotel up there. It didn't comply with the standard industrial designation previously. We asked the applicant to submit a request for this amendment so that we could, because we felt that the use was appropriate with what was being proposed in the PUD, and I believe Mr. Box is here to talk to that, if you need more information on the details of the application. But we considered it appropriate, but it didn't comply with the comprehensive plan, so we asked for the application, and then we took this opportunity to review the surrounding area, that standard industrial area. And you can see the applicant site there in the dark blue within the gray. The gray is the standard industrial. And we looked at that to see whether we should take a broader view in terms of changing the designation, and in response to that analysis, we determined that there was a larger area really that didn't fit the definition for standard industrial. And you can see that area outlined there. There are only a couple of industrial uses within that entire area. Includes the Lincoln Terrace Apartments, a lot of commercial along Lincoln, and Lincoln, I should point out, is an appearance corridor and a major activity corridor, which are purposed to support commercial office retail development. So the industrial use really isn't an appropriate use there anyway, and the majority of that activity along Lincoln is already zoned commercial, at least on the frontage, so about the first 140 feet. So this site is really out of context with that industrial designation. So as a result of that, we are proposing amending this area here, about 260 acres, to take it from standard industrial to urban development. That better aligns with our intent within the comprehensive plan because of those corridors that I just talked about and because of the use in the area. I will be talking to you in a couple of weeks about the employment land study, and I will stress in there that it's important to protect industrial land, but in this particular case, this land has already been repurposed to commercial and other uses, and those uses are appropriate in this particular case. So we think it's a better alignment with the comprehensive plan, and therefore, we're in support of this redesignation. The Planning Commission reviewed this on December 8th, and they recommended unanimous approval. The PUD has not come back to the Planning Commission yet, and I'm not sure when that's going to occur, but I don't believe the uses are going to change in any way that would make this inappropriate. So the recommendation is today to adopt the resolution to amend the plan.
Okay. Comments or questions for Russell on this amendment?
Russell, this is the Lincoln Plaza Hotel?
Correct.
So is the plan now to abandon the idea of a hotel and to look at other uses of the building?
Yes, I believe so. Mr. Box could talk to that in more detail, but they're proposing, I believe, student housing, some multifamily housing, some retail and office uses on that site.
With demolishing the old building?
That I don't know. I don't believe so. I'll let David talk to that.
Okay. Good morning, David. We will need your name and address for the record.
Morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I represent Gardner-Tannenbaum Development, who owns the property. We have a PUD that's waiting to be heard by the Planning Commission. We were reworking some of the renderings. What we're seeking to do is multifamily, commercials, some restaurants, student housing, using the existing facility. They're not going to demolish the building. What they're going to do is add some architectural elements to the existing building, rework the pool area, and make it kind of a new vibrant center for student housing, multifamily, new restaurants, and things of that nature. But to your question, yeah, they are intending to keep the original design and all the structural elements of the building and just add some architectural features to it.
Student housing, usually that's consistent with a college or university of higher education of some sort that's adjacent to the area, and so where's... What's the attraction of student housing? Because you don't have, there's not a institution of learning that's... I mean, you have Lincoln Langston Urban Center, but is that the student housing that they are trying to connect to?
Their hope was to get a lot of the OU Health Science Center, the students that use that facility on a regular basis, as well as allowing a multifamily element for the state senators and state House representatives that, you know, when sessions in, may want to maintain a residence that are from different parts of the state. So their belief was that they'd get a lot of students, a lot of medical students from the OU Health Science Center. It's just obviously on the other side of the Capitol.
All right, have a motion?
Move.
All right, we're voting on item 8L. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8M, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
No.
All right, we're voting on item 8M. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to move that into executive session?
Executive.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8O, understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes on 8O. That item moves to executive session. On to item 8P, it's claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F? How about 8P? 8P, claims recommended for denial. All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Those claims are denied. On to item 9, which is items from council, and we start with one from Councilwoman Sawyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. This is the second time we've heard this ordinance. The request to think about this came from some of the surrounding near downtown neighborhoods where we have new high-rise construction going up and the concern about the types of things that might be stored on balconies. And so I think I've mentioned earlier, our legal staff looked at best practices in some surrounding communities where a lot more of this development exists and tried to craft something that was very simple that basically says, on this outdoor balcony, you can't store items that belong indoors, and on the balcony, you can have furniture that was specifically designed to be outdoors. So we're not permitting things to be there. We're just trying to help control what might be there. Affectionately, this has been known as the Barcalounger Ordinance in an attempt to prevent people from putting sofas and outdoor furniture on their balconies.
All right, that's the idea.
Request from the neighbors.
Your Honor, I think this is maybe an unfortunate extension of government interference into a private matter. I feel very strongly this ought to be an issue between the apartment owner and his tenants, and the city getting involved in it, I think, is sort of an extension of government rights that we probably shouldn't do. In my opinion, this is bad policy. However, if my colleagues think it's good policy, why is it limited just to apartment complexes downtown? We have apartment complexes all over the city that have balconies on them, and shouldn't they be included in this ordinance if indeed it is passed?
I know you're asking collectively.
It's a rhetorical question.
Happened to be looking at me.
You look so natty all the time, Your Honor.
All right, so this is a public hearing. When would this be back to vote on it? This today? Is this for good?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay, so we would vote on it on May 29th, so no decision today? Yeah.
Meg, can I just point a clarification? Meg, the way I read it, it says it's unlawful to place or store any items on balconies visible from a public street that are not designed for outdoor use and made of weather-resistant material. So does that mean if it's not visible from the public street that it doesn't apply? I mean, you could have anything out there. If it's not visible from the public street, this doesn't apply?
I believe that is correct, and I'm going to check with the counselor.
Correct.
But I think that is correct.
Yes.
The genesis of this discussion, Ed, came from the Edge Development, which is being built between 12th and 13th and Dewey and Walker on the south side of Heritage Hills. And the developer specifically described the balconies to the neighbors as people's backyards, and that raised a level of concern with the neighbors about the kinds of things that might end up on a balcony and be very visible from their own backyards. And so I respect Councilman Ryan's comments. This is kind of a unique situation had in that Urban Renewal actually owns this property, and so the city has a lot more leeway in terms of working with the developer and encouraging and suggesting what might happen, but this is a very unusual situation, and it's not the case with the other developments that are occurring downtown.
A balcony is a balcony is a balcony, in my opinion. Secondly, just because Urban Renewal owns it doesn't mean that we ought to get involved in enforcing one of their rules. If Urban Renewal owns it and they are going to write a contract with that apartment dweller, I think that the protection for the surrounding area ought to be in the contract and let the owner slash developer, whoever, who's on the other side of that contract enforce it.
That is exactly what I was trying to suggest with regard to this property only.
But I don't think the city ought to be involved in it at all.
Pat, can I ask you, how... Right now, we regulate what people can put on their porches that are visible from the street and to their neighbors. Like, you can't put an indoor couch on your porch, and we have code, and we enforce that. How would this be different?
Ed, I think the key word you used, we enforce that. I don't think we enforce that at all. I mean, I've driven through neighborhoods where I've seen sofas on front porches.
We do in my ward. I mean, people...
Well, not exclusively, because I've seen things in your ward that were...
Not comprehensively, but...
It's a difficult ordinance to enforce. Our ordinance, our code violation, people are stressed right now, doing things that really significantly impact a neighborhood, and we don't have, I don't think, resources to enforce another ordinance that more properly should be enforced by the relationship between the owner and his tenants.
But manpower concerns aside, just in terms of policy and theory...
Theory is wonderful, but practice is what we're dealing with right here.
Well, I just want to ask, in theory, how is it different by putting an indoor couch on a porch? We've said that we can regulate that, and then on a...
Well, I think the difference may be, Ed, that we have a vehicle. There is a vehicle that exists between the apartment owner and his tenants to enforce that restriction of placing other things on a balcony. How about a bicycle? That's not something is indoor furniture. A lot of people would drive bicycles, and they'd put them on their patio so they wouldn't get stolen.
Okay.
So I have some real concerns with a lot of aspects of this ordinance. First, I don't think it was thought through as well as it should be, with all due deference to our legal department. Secondly, I don't think it's a proper use of government authority. We can't go continually expand what the government does for people. We need to draw the line somewhere, and I think this is where that line should be.
Let's get a clarification on the difference that Councilman Shadid and Councilman Ryan are discussing. Bob?
I'm not...
Bob, do we have an ordinance in place that does not allow us to have furniture on patios?
There are a few design districts that have that requirement. I think Passo is one of them, which would be in your ward. one of them, which would be in your ward. But citywide, we don't have that requirement. Now, we can deal with it as junk and debris. If, you know, if there's clutter, we will respond to that kind of, that kind of complaint.
Okay.
There's just a few neighborhoods that have that requirement.
I think the fact that we all drive around our neighborhoods and notice that people have couches and things on their porch speaks to why we need to have an ordinance to be able to deal with it if there's junk and debris. And this high-rise living arrangement is new enough in our community that I think the intent here was to try to get ahead of it, rather than let it become a problem.
Okay.
And also, just to clarify one point, bicycles would not be covered because they're customarily designed to be used or stored outside. And note that there are oars in there. So you don't, it's not...
Larry?
What would be... Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, this may be nitpicking, but I see a little bit of a distinction here. This is only for items that cannot be viewed from the street, which is different than somebody's front porch. And this seems to me to be more in line with a homeowner's covenant arrangement, where the neighbors come together in a covenant and say, hey, we want a higher level of control or beauty, and so we're going to, among ourselves, covenant not to allow this to happen. And I see this as really being more covered by an apartment owner covenant, if you will, rather than a city ordinance.
Okay. David, and then Skip.
Yes, I would agree with that comment, that it does sound like it would be better served just to allow each complex to make its own rules. And then you run into the question, what is debris? And then what is, you know, a very expensive type sofa? If you have the, going back to the residential situation, a very large covered porch, I think it sounds kind of attractive. Now, I know I complain about talking about benches and stuff, but I could see the advantage of having a very nice kind of sofa in a residential setting if you had a large porch. So I do think we are getting into areas that may create trouble, and it would seem to be better served by each complex, their own rules with respect to their tenants.
Skip, you want to say something?
I think the problem is, number one, of course, you know, if this was based on people's thoughts about unsightly items, you know, of course, you know, who defines what's unsightly? And the other thing is, is that not designed for outdoor use and made of weather-resistant material. So if you put three outdoor cooking grills on a balcony, I would assure you that if they stayed there uncovered, rusted for a period of time, that some neighbor is going to complain if this is a concern that they have. But at the same time, you can't enforce it against the individual because those are made for outdoor use. And if you take a lot of items that are outdoor-use equipment or items and just stack them on your balcony, every last one of them have an outdoor use, then at that point in time, are you going to enforce it against that individual?
All right. Are you asking?
Yes.
Okay.
That time, that type of deal would be up to the discretion of the inspector based on the complaint. Now, if, if there's an outdoor item on the, on a patio or a porch that is, that is broken, does it work? Those types of things, that's what we would consider junk and debris. And if we got a complaint, we could remove that.
So are we looking at now that our inspectors are going to go inside a person's apartment, go up to the second floor, go out on their patio, on their balcony, and put their hands on people's property to determine whether or not this grill is operable, or the two or three bicycles is broken down? That's, I mean, are we going there for it?
That would be an extreme case. This ordinance is, you check it, we'd check it from the street. If we got a complaint, and we saw material from the street, then we would ask if we needed to.
Okay. We can all come up with extreme cases here. The bottom line is, you know, do we want to choose to protect other neighborhoods and other, other citizens in this regard? It's an issue that we could discuss for a long time, but we're going to vote in two weeks. Gary, do you want to say something?
Yeah, but I got one clarification question. Did I hear you say that you had to use the term "from the street" because of a definition somewhere? Here's my concern, is if you're in a high-rise downtown, and you're high-rise across the street, why isn't the visibility or the visual sightlines the same as from the street? Why wouldn't I be concerned that somebody's trash is visible from my second-floor window versus you can't see it from the street? Did I understand that we couldn't do that because of a definition somewhere?
No. I think Dan drafted this, and he, I believe he just picked "visible from a public street" as what you were trying to protect, being the public going along on a public street from seeing these items that were deteriorated from being outdoors.
And it's, and it's been my understanding on, on trash and debris issues, if a neighbor's willing to let you go into their backyard so you can see what they're complaining about, and you can see it from their backyard, can't you write a citation at that point?
Yes. If we have legal cause to be on the property to view it, that would be true.
Would the same thing apply if this ordinance is adopted? If somebody that lives in a building on the upper floors doesn't like what's on the patio across the street, and they're willing to let you in their apartment, and you can see it from their apartment, wouldn't the same thing apply?
Not the way it's written now, because it had to be viewable from the, from the street.
Are we sure this is not an audition for a Saturday Night Live skit?
I think the young people here are getting a great lesson in civics here. All right, we have two weeks before we're going to vote. Let's move this forward. All right, cast your votes on item 9A. Passed unanimously. Other items from council. Pat Ryan, do you want to continue going? All right, Skip?
Yes, I would like to thank the Oklahoma City Community College for their invitation to attend the graduation ceremonies on this past Friday. And to state that from 1972 and to now, to know that this university, this college serves over 26,000 students is a remarkable testament to the faith of education in South Oklahoma City. And I know that when the school started, four years after that, I was part of the staff there. And to see the graduation ceremonies now compared to what it was when it started in 1972 is amazing. And the keynote speaker last Friday was one of our great representatives in the United States Congress, and Tom Cole, and he did a fantastic job of sharing with the graduates what life should be and the mistakes that America has made in reference to the policy issues over, over the generations of the United States history. And I was just really impressed with how he emphasized the fact that, you know, we've, we've made some downfalls in reference to civil rights. We've made some downfalls in reference to women's rights. We've made some mistakes as it relates to the Native Americans. And to show how, you know, falling down and getting back up, and how the, how America has had to do the same thing in reference to its continued progress and growth was a great testament of how well America has overcome some of its, its trial and tribulations and the mistakes as it relates to certain people in our, in our country. And so to, to the president of the university, and to the college, and to all the board members, I was really impressed with the presentation and the organization of the graduation. And so it was a great evening, and I was honored to be there. Thank you.
All right, Meg?
I guess briefly, given this last conversation, I'd like to remind our viewers that a couple of years ago, under the leadership of Councilman Ryan, we changed our ordinance procedure to allow for three opportunities to hear these things. We introduce it once, and in the second hearing, we have a public hearing, which is the point in time that citizens should come express their opinions. There was a lot of opinion about this ordinance that was just introduced, expressed to me in some neighborhood meetings. But I don't see those folks here today. And it makes it very difficult to express the fears and the worries of the neighbors. So March 20, May 29 is the date that this is set for vote. And if there are people that in fact are concerned about this issue, please attend the council meeting. Thank you.
David?
Well, just to continue that, we could invite everybody out this Friday and Saturday to the Urban Land Institute's Better Block OKC at 7th and Hudson and continue this discussion. I'm sure we'll have a lot of ideas and input from that group. And, but I do, I'm looking forward to the Better Block celebration and hope that everybody can attend beginning Friday afternoon, Friday evening. Thank you.
Uh huh. Pete? Larry?
Yeah, just as far as citizens getting their ideas, I'd like to encourage the neighbors in River Park, Windsor Forest, and Windsor Oaks. Their neighborhood meetings are coming up this week, and my wife and I will be there. I hope they will also come and look forward to seeing them, to hear their ideas, their concerns, and their, and their challenges. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed?
Friday is National Bike to Work Day, and so I encourage everyone to get on their bikes and ride. Sunday is the OKC Pride Parade outside of Chesapeake Arena. There's nothing in Oklahoma City that has so many thousands of people, so jubilant and loud and happy. I would remind everybody that the last float will be a big float where you just throw all your recycling in, so if everybody can come together and help in that endeavor. To, I want to talk in lines of getting things out ahead of time and getting them properly vetted. I have two resolutions coming up, and Francis just handed them out. One, we've talked about extensively, it looks like from the letter from Jim Couch, and then also the story about the CAD-to-CAD interface, that we're finally potentially coming to conclusion, and the CAD-to-CAD interface will come online. I understand it was tested on Friday, and that went well. This resolution would basically adopt as a policy from the council that FIRE would no longer go on Level 3 calls as negotiated between FIRE and Emsa. And they developed a protocol for which calls FIRE would go on and which ones they would not go on. The, my understanding from Chief Brian is that would result in about a drop of about 12,000 calls per year. So I give that to you just to read over, and then hopefully we can introduce that in two weeks. There is some language that would allow for tweaking it if problems arise. The next one, which I introduced with some trepidation, given some of the libertarian comments on Meg's resolution, but I just want to float the idea of a potential compromise on tobacco-free parks. There are some 21 municipalities in Oklahoma that have adopted ordinances which ban smoking to some degree in their parks. And that the top is a list of all those cities that have done it. Lawton just did it in September. That would include Norman and Edmund and many, many others. There are groups in my ward who have, over the last six months, asked the city of Oklahoma City to do something similar. Jane Sutter, the Boys and Girls Club is situated on a park. They've, they've asked, their children have written and asked for the city to protect them. Others, I just got an email as I was working on this yesterday from somebody complaining about the large accumulation of cigarette butts around the Myria Gardens, the Crystal Bridge. And, and public health advocates have also asked us to take this step. Now, we've responded to them and said that the 1987 preemption law would preclude us from adopting such an ordinance, because we're not allowed to. 21 municipalities disagree, but there, and I just want to go through some of that, and the background is included in these handouts. But in 1987, we have the preemption law, and Pete's going to introduce a resolution, I understand, in two weeks about that. This is in no way mutually exclusive with Pete's resolution. But in 1987, they defined "public place" as any enclosed indoor area where individuals other than employees are invited or permitted. So that 1987 preemption law was talking about indoor areas, not outdoor areas. They then had language talking about the intent of the legislature, which was to, that they intended to preempt any other regulation promulgated to control smoking in public places, which again is indoor areas, and to standardize laws that government subdivisions may adopt to control smoking. Then, as the years went by, they had some amendments, and they banned smoking in the zoo, for example, both indoors and outdoors. They banned smoking in educational facilities, all the grounds, indoors and outdoors. So municipalities started adopting ordinances, 2008, 2009, 2010 banning tobacco in their parks. So then municipalities asked the Attorney General for an opinion as to, well, can you, is this legal with the preemption law to ban tobacco in parks? And the Assistant Attorney General Janice Pressler in August 2010 gave the written, two-page written opinion, which is included here, in which she says, "This is very straightforward. It's so obvious that we don't even need a formal opinion. Because the language of the act is clear, I can answer your question without the necessity of a formal opinion. The act does not apply to outdoor public areas such as outdoor municipal parks. Consequently, 1-1527 does not prevent a municipality from enacting an ordinance to prohibit smoking in a municipal park." The municipal councillor from Lawton gave a several-page opinion, two-page opinion, which is included in this packet, that municipalities could in fact restrict smoking in municipalities. Now, our municipal councillor has expressed some reservation, which I'll ask him in a second, but I'll just summarize as, I think Kenny would agree that the preemption law only talks about indoor areas. It does not apply to outdoor areas. I'm speaking for him, but I don't think he has a problem with that. The problem he has is the additional language that says that the intent of the legislature was to standardize laws that government subdivisions may adopt to control smoking. In other words, that the intent was to have the same law throughout all the municipalities. Well, and, and that if you had a, if you had something like Lawton has, where you had a fine, Lawton's fine is anywhere from $10 to $100. If you had such a fine, then that individual, not necessarily the state legislature, but an individual could then sue the city of Oklahoma City and say, "City of Oklahoma City never had standing to put this in place because of the preemption law." So to address Kenny's concern, a compromise might be that you, that you ban tobacco in park. And you could either do it as some municipalities have done, just in areas where kids are doing athletic activities, or you could have it citywide in all parks, or you could have it citywide in all parks and have one little area where smokers can smoke and put all their cigarette butts, any one of those permutations, but not have a fine, not have an enforcement vehicle. You just, you put up signs, you capture the benefits of marketing and trying to disassociate sporting activities and athletic activities with smoking. You would have a certain amount of the public who would be respectful enough and who would, who would obey or fall in line with that policy. But you wouldn't have a, a, a fine that somebody could then sue the city until such time as either people respect what Pete is going to introduce in a couple of weeks, and we repeal the preemption law, or we get a formal opinion from the Attorney General that says, "You can proceed." My understanding from Kenny is that you would be okay with such a compromise.
Yes. My concern is the fact that the preemption language not only says it's preempting other regulations to control smoking in public places, which as Councilman Shadid points out, is defined to be only indoor, but it was also intend, and, that's conjunctive, and to standardize laws that governmental subdivisions may adopt to control smoking. Then it goes on to say that cities and towns may enact and enforce laws prohibiting and penalizing conduct under provisions of this act, but the provisions of such laws shall be the same as provided in this act, and enforcement provisions shall not be more stringent. So it would be great if the, the act itself only spoke to indoor areas, but it doesn't. They, the legislature has come along, and they've added regulations relating to outdoor areas, including any part of a zoo, whether indoors or outdoors, and also, as Councilman Shadid pointed out... as Councilman Shadid pointed out, educational facilities. It specifically addresses on the grounds of the facility by all persons. And then there are other provisions in there where they talk about you can't smoke in certain areas outdoors, or no exhaust from a smoking room is located within 15 feet outdoors. So, in other words, the act, even though the act defines public place to be indoor, it also regulates outdoor. So, that's my concern. And if you make it an ordinance, even if it's a Class A offense where you're just initially going to issue a citation, you can still end up arresting someone for that if they fail to appear in court, or if they refuse to sign the citation, potentially you can arrest them. So, because of that concern, I would recommend that it be more of a policy suggested here with one possible change on the model ordinance. I would suggest that number four be changed to any person found violating this policy may be asked to discard the tobacco product or leave the premises. If you say they're a subject to immediate ejection, that means essentially if you eject them from the premises, you're arresting them. It's a tantamount to the same thing. So, I would suggest that we just ask them to discard it or leave the premises.
And what you're referring to, this is a model resolution from Minnesota that doesn't have the enforcement vehicle. The Lawton resolution or ordinance, in your opinion, would go too far, which is also included. It's one, two, it's four pages long, five pages long, was adopted in September.
That the ordinance?
Yeah, from Lawton.
Yes, if you're enacting an ordinance and making it part of the code, then it becomes criminally enforceable. You're going to issue citations or potentially arrest someone for violating that.
But there would be nothing to stop us from doing something on this order now as a policy?
Right, you can do that as a policy and...
Making signs like tobacco-free youth recreation area, putting signs up, trying to disassociate smoking from athletics.
Anything for not smoking?
Yeah, anything.
It doesn't prohibit it, it's just making...
Right.
It would be an indication that we have a policy.
Excuse me, we have a policy that would discourage smoking.
Right.
And we couldn't find anybody for not, you know, saying, "You're welcome," or something.
That would be fine. And courteous citizens won't smoke.
People who aren't courteous would smoke even if there was a no-smoking sign. So I think we'll get those who are amenable to the same kind of philosophy we've adopted.
I would just, you know, seatbelts, I think Pete reminded me, seatbelts is the same way. The first two years, there was no enforcement. They just said, "Wear your seatbelt." And then, a couple of years later, they added the enforcement arm.
And also, I'd point out that I talked to Wendell yesterday, and apparently the park board at their next meeting is also considering this exact same type of policy. I don't know if Wendell already had a resolution drafted for that or whether or not they're just going to be discussing the issue.
Good morning. Yes, there is an item on the park board agenda tomorrow for them to discuss, I'll refer to it as a voluntary policy that would come on to you for your review as well, that would ask people not to smoke, pardon me, not to use tobacco products in parks. The park commission does understand that it is not an ordinance. It would not be enforceable. And they have in mind that signage would be placed in the parks. They have not discussed, that is, encouraging people not to use tobacco products. They have not discussed delineating certain areas in parks from others, but just designating the whole park as an area, all parks, as areas where smoking and other tobacco-use products was discouraged.
I would just, you know, if the states, and this goes to how inept the preemption legislation was, but if their intent was to standardize municipalities, they failed, because you have 21 municipalities who have passed different ordinances regulating outdoor tobacco use in parks. And it also goes to the natural desire for local control and local, which Pete will talk about in a couple of weeks. But can we, as a city, ask for a formal opinion from the Attorney General or from a legislator to ask the Attorney General, given that 21 cities have done this? We have citizens asking us to protect their children, and it's unclear what we can and can't do.
The, we can't directly ask for one, but we can ask a state legislator to ask for an opinion on that question.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Gary? All right. We have city manager reports?
We've already heard from Mike Carrier this morning, but Eric Winger is here at the request of Councilman Kelly to discuss some issues regarding some drainage problems in Ward 7. Winger?
Thank you. I have included a little bit of the background in your packets today. You'll find just a one-page summary. But we've also brought some photos to help describe some of the issues that we're experiencing in Ward 7. These are not going to be much different than what each of you experiences in your various wards. You know, obviously, we're coming to the end of our spring rain season. It's a very busy time in Oklahoma City. We've got a lot of drainage issues throughout the city. And as I get ready to introduce this, realize that as we take calls either through the Action Center or we receive those directly in Public Works, those are all recorded, and those have been recorded for a number of years. Before computers, those were actually recorded on note cards that were kept in an index file of all the locations across the city that we actually had a complaint. And it would list the complaint and the type of complaint and the frequency. Those have since been converted to a GIS system that's computer-based, allows to track those and pull those up more readily. But before you today, we've actually got two locations, and this is going to be in the vicinity of Northeast 50th, just west of Martin Luther King. We've got two of those that, we're going to show you some of the research that we've done and some of the solutions that we're proposing for Ward 7. This is 51st and Terry Avenue, and obviously, these photos, you know, paint that picture. You see a card that's halfway submerged on the left-hand side. This was just this past March after a significant rain event. You'll see it again in the photo on the right. And I would not tell you that this is a common occurrence in Oklahoma City, but it is frequent. We are finding that there are areas of the city that are low-lying, that do go submerged. We do have street crews of the areas that we know that are reported that will set out high-water signs to discourage the driving traffic from going into these. But obviously, in this case, this citizen was trapped in this water. When we look at this in plan view, in the lower right-hand portion, you'll see the upside-down T-intersection here, Terry Avenue and 51st, and that's where that flooding occurred. What we have, if you look to the center portion of the drawing, is you have a private property. Between that point and the private property and up to the upper left is the outfall. So, in most cases of the water, the water has to go someplace. And in this case, it has a small pipe that has since been clogged or damaged, and it no longer drains that intersection. We have taken some photos of that pipe. And so there's actually two solutions for this. This is a street flooding concern for Oklahoma City would fall into a medium priority. We have ones where we have high priority. Those would be ones that cause property damage, ones that flood homes. And so, we do treat these in a triage-type manner. Obviously, funding is always the obstacle that we have to overcome to actually do the improvements. But in this case, we actually have two options, because this is a significant public safety issue. To solve this, it's constructing one of two pipes. Option one, you see in the yellow alignment, there's a slide that I'll show you here next in a moment, and then you'll see option two that actually follows an existing easement that would be more readily accessible to us. We go to the next slide. You'll see this first option. Even though the first option is a shorter distance, we're proposing a 60-inch concrete pipe to make that connection. But it would require three easements, and as most of you know, that takes some considerable time in some cases. Option two is a little bit longer distance, but it's an existing easement. And so we have current access. We could currently maintain that. It's about 520 feet. Next slide. And the estimate for the recommended option's about $150,000. The way we treat these, and this is something that we do for each of these types of concerns, you know, whether it be Ward 7 or one of our other wards, is we go through this type of analysis for each of these. We come up with these dollar values. We look at schedules, like you have the one below. We could do this project in-house. It would take about 60 days to do the design. We would then bid that, and it could be constructed in approximately 60 days. And it's just a matter of prioritization. This is an example of one that we're going to go ahead and raise to high priority. Obviously, because of the lack of access that residents have to even get in and out of their homes in this location. But we have others in the city that we're also tracking as well. But to round out that discussion, just to give you that information, you know, this is an occurrence that's in Ward 7. And we are planning to look at the availability of bond funding. We do have the opportunity to use unlisted bond funds in some cases, and this one would apply. So we'd be bringing that forward to you for your consideration just as soon as we finish those plans and make a recommendation to actually resolve the issue at 51st and Terry. We have a second category of issues, and this is actually at 50th and Prospect. And I know that I've spoken with each of you on a number of occasions on creek erosion. This happens to be erosion, as you see here, just west of Prospect, south of 50th Street. And we've identified the creek in the diagonal here. It's bounded by property that's private on both sides. There's not an existing easement. And so there's not the opportunity for the city to go in there and make any sort of maintenance or repair. This is pretty common in Oklahoma City. Fact is, is that when private owners go and purchase these parcels, they're actually purchasing the creek as well. And so just as much as they maintain their home or their lawn, they're actually responsible for the maintenance of the creek. And so this is a condition where we've received a call. There is some erosion that's occurring along that creek. The channels are starting to slough. There's some poor-quality soils. They're not vegetated. There's not riprap installed, and so the channel's starting to erode. But unfortunately, in this case, this is one that we're not going to be able to address because of the private ownerships.
Picture of this location, Eric?
I don't. But there is a park, and maybe I'll allude to this. There is a park that's just southwest of this. This is going to be Perry Park that's been recently constructed. It's got a new parking lot that's constructed. There is some flooding that's occurring at that park that's come in on a second request. And what we have found with that park, and there's some runoff that's there, is that the work isn't done there. There's some contractor grading that is yet to occur that we call grade-to-drain. They just haven't completed it to where it will actually go to the outfall. But related to the 50th and Prospect issue, they believe that that park is causing some runoff issues to that particular creek. But staff has identified that that parking lot's only 5,000 square feet. It doesn't attribute any appreciable runoff over historical, and so it's not the cause of that erosion. The erosion in this particular creek that's occurring just happens to be poor-quality soils and lack of any sort of bank protection. But I could bring those if that's something that is needed.
Well, going back to Terry, I went out personally and took pictures of these locations, and I forwarded the pictures down to staff or to Debbie. But at Terry, at 51st and Terry, there is about an eight-feet-deep hole that is situated just to the north-west corner.
It's at that intersection there where those two lines intersect, the green and the yellow. Yes.
So with this hole, what, will we be able to correct that? Because the hole is going to continue to get bigger, and it's a major nuisance to the community. And also, it's a dangerous attraction to children. If a child fell down in there, that's a major injury that someone is going to sustain. And I'm trying to figure out, how did he get there? And what are we going to do in reference to correcting that issue? You get the water flowing through it, but you've still got the hole there.
So the hole is actually the catchment for the drainage in that area. And you probably, as you noticed in the pictures that you were able to send to us, there's a small piece of pipe that's at the bottom of that hole, and that's where that water's supposed to leave. It's where that water actually is supposed to cross private property and discharge into the Deep Port Creek system. And that pipe, which is very small, is actually plugged up, and it's not conveying water the way that it should. The pipe that we're proposing is a much larger pipe that we would locate in that same vicinity. So obviously, improvements to the area that's the hole would be a part of the project. We would make sure that that is safe. But it would still be the catchment for the water of that intersection.
Well, I wish that the council would have, would be able to see the actual pictures, because I think it brings home a bigger and a more definite concern as it relates to this condition. And I'm sure there are some conditions very similar to that in some of the other wards, that it seems like that, over the years, we have allowed it either development to just not be in compliance, or if we didn't have anything that we had as far as a policy as it relates to drainage. And at the end of the day, we ultimately say that, well, this is a responsibility of the citizens, because they purchased property next to a tributary or next to a creek, and then all of a sudden, when the erosion gets wider and wider and deeper, then we tell the citizens that it is your duty and your obligation to the creek. And I just find that so unfair and so unbalanced as it relates to drainage. And we know that much of this drainage is created because of new development, that sometimes we have not been very accountable, or at least in reference to policy, to the developers to make sure that this water is going someplace that don't have a negative impact on the residents.
So the drainage ordinance is written to protect residents from developments that are required to do detention or they're required to do drainage upgrades. And so those are very much critical issues that are managed by Public Works. So when a developer does bring a set of plans to the city proposing a new development, there is a very strict set of criteria, engineering criteria, that they must meet before that development can be approved. Generally speaking, it does not allow them to increase the runoff from the development downstream. They've got to measure the historical runoff, and they're not allowed to exceed that once the development's done. What we're seeing with a lot of these, and I bring these two issues today, is that there are issues that are public in nature, like 51st and Terry. There is an existing pipe that's damaged that needs to be replaced. We've been tracking that since about 2007. It didn't become critical until this past March, when it started actually flooding the street to a level that had some public safety issues. And so we've actually elevated that to a high status in the office, and we're planning improvements to hopefully have those done this calendar year. But there are the second category of issues that are truly just private property issues. And those are the ones that we unfortunately can't address. We don't have easements.